The City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
LaLebody-Labeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. This meeting is being held finally back into the city council chambers. I'm happy to see you all live again, and our clerks and everybody here. However, it is closed to the public at this time. We're going to make these meetings by meetings in collaboration and coordination with our Board of Health as we have throughout this COVID-19 pandemic. Being as that may be, citizens' input is the first item on our agenda this evening. And being as we are closed to the public, we urge all our residents who are interested in speaking during citizens' input, which we will abide by the three-minute rule like we would do if we were live here, they would be able to send their emails to city underscore council@for river ma.org prior to 3:00 PM the date of this meeting or any other meeting. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Madam Clerk.
President Ponti, Vice President LaLebody, and members of the city council. I have to say, this has been a city that hasn't been taken serious by the mayor and city administration, and yet the excuse is COVID. Well, newsflash, business needs to still be taken care of, not put blame on COVID. And I heard John Perry was suspended due to an issue with Jason Burns. Did Jason get suspended too? But yet, this mayor keeps saying open transparency. School committee, I'm sick and tired of my citizens' input not being read. If the superintendent or members of the school committee can't take the complaints, then resign. Superintendent needs to resign, and let's get the black clouds from over our school system. Lastly, I'm asking not to support the baseball field or any extra monies till the superintendent is gone, since he cost $25,000 of his incompetence. Thank you, David Olivera.
Just for the record, there wasn't any kind of suspension of any kind of individual, just for public edification. Thank you.
Mr. President, who was that signed by? I didn't hear.
David Olivera.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The second submission that we have is from Colin Dias. Good afternoon, Council President and members of the city council. I believe the state of our school department is in need of a remodel on multiple fronts. Watching yesterday's meeting from my phone because no one was allowed in the meeting room despite it saying on the meeting agenda it was open to the public, has shown me the state of our school department is fractured. First of all, the Chair of the Evaluation Subcommittee, Mimi Laravy, admitted to violating the open meeting law by meeting with Mr. Hetzler behind closed doors to work on this evaluation process. Why didn't they work on crafting the evaluation in an open session, public meeting? Secondly, to hear school committee Chairman Mark Costa minimize the impact of Superintendent Malone's bullying and mistreatment of staff shook me to my core. He claimed, and I quote, "I don't believe the superintendent's conduct should necessarily cast a dark shadow," and he goes on into the superintendent's alleged accomplishments. That is so nauseating and revolting, that we as a school committee believe that staff misconduct is a lower priority to other school-related matters. Mark Costa should resign for that comment alone. That is proof to me that he does not have the thoughts and feelings of the staff in the school department as a priority. The Vice Chairman should have also recused himself from this affair, as the Herald News reported that just a day before the committee voted on Malone's conduct, that Mr. Costa had a family member receive a position in the school department. And then we go into the superintendent's conduct, just as the meeting itself. He threatened all the school committee members with legal action. The superintendent is out of control. He uses Fall River Public Schools Twitter page for personal business and acting without being professional, promoting businesses in Dorchester, blocking other Twitter accounts. I also want to thank Mayor Paul Coogan for his public rebuke of the superintendent, and I couldn't agree more with his comments. Committee of Four is holding our city hostage. Superintendent is a liability to the city. His treatment of others is shameful. The Committee of Four should not place personal agendas and self-interests before the common good and place Fall River first. We need a breath of fresh air on the school committee. We need to restore accountability and public trust in the school department. We need to restore integrity. We need to have anti-bullying policies for staff, and we need to assure that standard operating procedures for all investigations are followed to a T, no wiggle room. I'm calling for an investigation into why standard operating procedures were not followed during the course of this investigation, along if there were any influences during this investigation. As I told the committee yesterday, and I will remind them today, there's an election coming up, and this election for school committee shall be on, excuse me, and this election for school committee shall be a referendum on the superintendent. Committee of Four should be reminded that elections have consequences. Thank you very much. Respectfully submitted, Colin Dias. And that's all we have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on our agenda is a five-year capital improvement plan. This item is on our agenda this evening. It was referred back on the 23rd of February. Ms. Sahadi? Mr. President? Counselor C1, Counsel Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as Ms. Sahadi's coming down, the clerk's office had called, just asking for, I think, a poll of who we wanted for tonight's meeting. Do you know what the outcome was?
Are you talking about school department participation? Yes, we polled the members of the city council to ask if they needed members of the school committee. The overall consensus to that was no, and the invitation went to the superintendent, and he sent a communication to us saying he's unavailable to attend after the request that was made by our colleague in seat seven, as well as myself and others.
So was the, was there a request for the superintendent to be here?
An invitation was sent and a request, and it was turned down. I will say, though, that, as you know, Mr. Pacheco is here.
No, I recognize that, and that's why I'm bringing it up. I'll be making a motion to table the portion that we, in regards to the school department, since the superintendent's not here, so I just don't want Mr. Pacheco to just have to sit here.
Counselor C1 has the floor. Counsel Kadim?
Yield.
Counselor C8?
I got to tell you, I don't know of other times that the superintendent has come. If Mr. Pacheco is here, as well as Kevin is here, I just hate tabling matters. There's work to be done, and I, you know, if they certainly, my colleague in seat number one can make a motion to table, and we can take a vote on it. But I will tell you, I didn't like the object two weeks ago, there's work to be done. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seats, Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Pelletier.
I understand Kevin Almeda is not coming in as well?
He did send us, yeah, he is sick.
So all we got is Kenny?
That is correct.
He's going to hold the fort now, or try?
He will try to, I'm sure he will.
So it's up to us to decide what we're going to do. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, I just want to make it clear. It was at our last meeting that the city council unanimously, for the most part, from my understanding, requested the presence of the superintendent. So I just want to make it clear, if a councilor feels the way a councilor feels, that the councilor can feel the way they want to feel. But I'm just saying, Counselor Pelletier requested the superintendent be here for the capital items, and the invitation was sent, and counselors can vote the way they want to do. So I just want to make that clear.
And that's exactly what I said, Mr. President, that Counselor in seat number one or in seat number seven have their own opinion, and I'm going to share my opinion.
Sure.
My opinion is that I just hate to be holding things up. My understanding is some of this is a placeholder, that we could lose the ability. That's the concern that I have.
Sure.
I don't know that to be true, but if Mr. Pacheco was here, I could ask him. It's unfortunate that Mr. Almeda is ill, and I was not aware of that, to my colleague in seat number seven just said that. But that's my concern. I don't want to hold things up, and then we are putting an ability to lose something or to not be able to get something.
And I respect that. If the superintendent showed up, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim.
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, if we're going to talk about feelings and things of that nature, then I just want to go on the record saying that I feel a little disgusted that the superintendent is still employed with the school department, especially after last night's evaluation and the way he conducted himself. Again, just another sign of, you know, unprofessionalism, bullying. So I'm on the record of saying that I don't think he should be working for the City of Fall River, so if we're talking about feelings. However, Counselor in seat seven did say that she's never recalled the superintendent coming before us. He was here last year, he was here before that, he's been at every single meeting. So if folks don't want to hold up business, then maybe the superintendent should start respecting the city council based on our request. So if he doesn't want to hold up the business, or if he doesn't feel like business needs to get done, then that's on him. If he wants to show up to the city council so we can have a full-out conversation, because Mr. Pacheco, unless you want to invite the school committee down to say that Mr. Pacheco has the authorization to bind the school department on capital items and all that, then fine, let's have a conversation. But the last time I checked, the superintendent was the person who was in charge of all capital items, budgeting items. In fact, in fact, the school committee, those individuals sitting over there, have gave away their authority for line item budgeting. So, I mean, maybe they did give the authority to Ken Pacheco to make all the decisions without having any oversight. With that, I'll make a motion that we table the capital items as it pertains to the school department until the superintendent is able to attend the meeting.
Is that your motion now, Counselor?
That is my motion. I'll second.
Motion to table the five-year capital improvement plan discussion has been made by Counsel Kadim, seceded by Counselor Peckham. You have a point of information?
Point of clarification, it's just the school department portion.
Ms. Sahadi, before we entertain, finish entertaining the motion, is there any specific capital improvement plan items that you'd like to discuss on the city side?
Yes, certainly, Counsel President.
So Counsel Kadim, will you withdraw your motion at this time?
No, I want to break it up. I don't, I don't, I want to table the school department conversation on capital items until the superintendent is able to attend.
Fair enough, thank you very much. Point of information, Counselor in seat three?
Just a comment. I did get his email, but did the superintendent mention why he can't be here?
No, he didn't.
Yeah, that's my recollection as well, but it'll, you know, I think it's important that he's here. We have a number of items that we're going to be voting on, hopefully, loan items and such, and, you know, nothing against Mr. Pacheco, he's very competent, but also Mr. Almeda's ill, so I'll be voting in favor of the motion to table.
Thank you.
I think it's just the right thing to do. Thank you.
We, I'm kind of letting this conversation go, there's really no discussion on a motion to table, so I'm going to pause discussion at this point for counselors. But with respect to the school department-related capital projects, there is a motion on the floor to table school department-related capital projects in the five-year capital improvement plan for discussion purposes this evening that has been made by Counsel Kadim, seceded by Counsel Peckham. Roll call.
On the motion to table, Counselors Kadim?
Yes. For the record, it's a motion to table school department items only.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLebody-Labeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
And President Ponti?
Yes, Counselor in seat two, I know you have a point of information, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, my question was, so that would be the 4.9 and the 1.8 for the baseball fields as well?
That would be, that is a priority communication that's stuck in full council because of the objection, so that would, the only action at that point when we go into priority matters would be to lift that item from the table and authorize it to be published, and then also refer to finance. So action will need to be taken on that specific item tonight in a referral, but there's no discussion scheduled as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sahadi?
Thank you, Counsel President. And so, as you know, the capital improvement plan is a plan that covers five years of time, so from 2022 through 2026. There are a number of items in this capital plan that we will be coming forward to you that are city items that will be included, a few of them this evening actually, as priority items. Some of them, for an example, the IT department had some items included in this capital plan that we have now determined that are eligible expenses under the CARES program itself. So we are, we will be picking up those switches, in particular, under the CARES money, and so we won't be including them as capital under this plan going forward in terms of bonding. In addition, we have a number of items that were included in this plan, some cruises at the police station, some unmarked cars, and some other items that we will be including in the operating budget going forward and utilizing one-time money to pay for those items as opposed to bonding for them. So although they were included in this plan as part of capital, without any indication when the plan was put together as to the funding mechanisms, our current plan is to include some of those items in the operating budget for fiscal year '22 and use one-time monies. Other items in this plan are included in priority items this evening. The EMS building, the EMS department and the fire department have been talking about adding a building onto their current headquarters building, and that is in this, that is in this plan, and also in your packet this evening. In addition, for the Department of Facilities, that would be Mr. Gallagher's department, there are a number of departments that are in need of repairs, building repairs, which are also included in your packet this evening. Those items include, at a minimum, the boiler at the library. They include the windows at the police station. There are a couple of fire stations that haven't been completed in terms of their projects, so we're presenting to you six doors that are left to be completed at Candaeus, as well as six at Fire Headquarters. In addition, the two garages are still being repaired, as you know. He was, he was able to repair some of those garages and do some repair with his operating budget this year, but he's looking to complete those projects and do some additional lighting at both Third Street and Pearl Street, so those are included in your packet as well. The DPW department, Mr. Perry, has been renting an excavator. I know it's always been a concern of this committee with regard to the fact that we pay annual rent, and so in fiscal '22, in this plan, was the purchase of an excavator, and you will have that in front of you as well this evening. And the police department is in need of the bucket truck, and so that is in front of you as well. The one thing I will tell you with regard to the loan authorizations that are in priority that are included in this capital plan, some of those items that I just spoke about, is I've had conversations with bond counsel, and if you were to compare that loan order to loan orders that you have seen in the past, there is an additional section included in that loan order. If, in fact, the City of Fall River is able to secure some of the monies, federal monies from the American Relief Plan and utilize those monies for capital improvements, we will be able to utilize that, those dollars, as opposed to going out and bonding for them. So the language has been changed in the new loan order to reflect that. From that, each department is asked for, we talked about this briefly at the last meeting, but each department annually sits down with the administration and gives us an idea of what their plans are for their needs for the next five years. And so you do have some projects that are included in here that span fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2026. Again, it's a document that continues to change. Things change, new, new needs come about with regard to the departments, and in some instances, we have to fast-forward a project because, you know, we'll just say, for an example, the boiler dies and we need to replace a boiler, but, you know, Mr. Gallagher might have thought it was going to be a '23 or '24 acquisition. Other than that, Counsel President, I don't have anything else with regard specific to the plan. It is a plan, it's, as I said, a moving document. We continue to make changes to it on a regular basis. I tried to take the plan last year as well as this year and at least give you an idea of which assets in the plan we would hope to pay for with operating money. As you know, in the past, that hasn't been, we haven't been very successful with that because we've been limited with our revenue resources. We also discuss in this plan those assets that we are planning to bond for.
Ms. Sahadi, just for a couple of quick things before we open up the questions for clarification purposes. I know that there's been ongoing debate at the federal level, as you indicated, for the $1.9 trillion stimulus plan. Fall River has expected estimations in the $70 million range, I believe, with the school department also receiving upwards of $35 to $40 million. These are just early projections based on some early reporting that has been put out. So I guess my question is, has there been any discussions with the, with the mayor and the rest of your finance team on some of the current capital projects that might be lower in value to pay them down if we do get some of that money? In addition to that, what other capital projects do you think is a big priority of the cities in the next five years? With the addition of a possible transfer station, including?
Exactly, Counselor. So right now, it's really too early to tell. If you read the House bill, Item D in the House bill pretty much was wide open in terms of economic losses, and so you could deem a lot of the infrastructure to be economic losses. If you read the Senate bill, which was signed last week, it was a complete amendment or a rewrite of the House bill, and Item D limits it to water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So, you know, certainly, we are all very hopeful that when it goes back and gets re-debated, that there'll be a wider range of capital items that will be allowable, but Items 1 through C, or A through C, deal with the pandemic itself and revenue losses. So Item D was the only item in the original bill that really would have allowed us to spend a significant amount of, of those dollars on capital and infrastructure. So I'm hopeful that when it comes back out and it's finalized, there'll be a lot more leeway, but we are, the administration does meet on a regular basis, and we do have a list of projects that if, in fact, we are able to utilize these dollars to do capital improvements, we have some underway. If it happens to be limited to the Senate's version of the item, then water and sewer will certainly benefit from this, and we will be able to utilize some rate reduction or rate relief with water and sewer by dealing with their infrastructure and their projects that they have open.
And just lastly, the projects that are on your five-year outlook that are of priority, can you perhaps go into that on the city side?
So on the city side, in particular, in fiscal '22, you have in front of you $2.7 million for the EMS building, you have $2.1 million for the miscellaneous building repairs that will be under facilities, and you have in front of you the two pieces of equipment, I believe a total $390,000. In addition to that, the city is currently working with an architect to put together a cost estimate for a storage facility at the DPW garage. We don't have that completed yet, but I'd like to get that down to this council prior to the next meeting or two. In addition to that, as you know, you have school projects in front of you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Lee?
So basically, you have a plan, whether, whether that passes, that Part D passes from the House to the Senate? We have a plan on one side or the other, whichever comes down the line.
We're hopeful. We're hopeful. I mean, as much as the plan can be written at this point, right?
You said water, sewer, and what else was?
Broadband.
Broadband, so cable lines, things like that? Considering that we have a lot of road damage from electrical wire, would we be able to do some type of repair on the roads?
So, so again, you know, I track this daily, quite frankly, and I'm sure Counselor in seat one probably does as well. We don't know. You know, there's no interpretation of what the bill is at the moment. You know, certainly, there's, there's, you know, all, everyone, to include, you know, Senator Roderick's, that is very hopeful that we are going to be able to utilize these funds for more than a very limited purpose, but right now, I don't know.
And if we received funding and you happened, if we happened to approve utilization of that funding for a project that we weren't supposed to, what government body would come down to, to say, hey, we weren't supposed to do that?
You mean if we spent money on something we shouldn't have?
Let's say we, let's say we put it on the roads, and then it comes out later that we weren't supposed to do that. What happens there?
Well, typically, if we have a federal program and we spend it on ineligible costs, then we pay it back.
Have to pay it back.
Because we drew it down, we spent it on ineligible costs, and we have to pay it back. That's, that's pretty much why you have a, a team here within city government, from the grant writer down, that tracks all of the eligibility of the expenses, particularly right now with the CARES money. You know, we still have that $7.9 million that was allocated to us. We're very cautious of what can and can't be expended. Now, they've, they have extended the beneficial use of that, those monies to December 31, 2021. So therein lies why some of the IT expenses that were originally in this plan back in December when we wrote it, because then the CARES money expired in December of 2020, now has gotten extended. We have checked with the federal government to be sure that those kinds of expenses are eligible and we're moving forward.
Yep. It just puts us a little bit of a disadvantage to, the vagueness, even with the CARES Act, the vagueness of how much we can use it.
It's unfortunate, but it's true.
Yeah, and then if we ever do anything, we have to pay it back, so it's kind of just throws us off, so. But thank you, I appreciate that, and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat two, Counsel Deion.
How are you this evening?
I am good, Counsel.
Good. So my first questions are going to be based on if we weren't to get the CARES Act money and couldn't utilize it. In terms of the excavator, is that something that's rented intermittently? Is it rented annually? What's the situation on that, and what does it represent in dollars?
The annual rent is $48,000, and it's in your budget, and it's a monthly rental.
Okay. Do you know what the life of an excavator is?
15 years.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my estimate.
Okay, so based on 15 years, it definitely would make sense to, to own one rather than rent one.
The same would be true with that bucket truck. I would say that would be a 15-year asset.
So we're basically looking at $11.9 million in loan orders if we take everything, including...
That's correct.
What's our actual, how much debt does the city carry right now?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel, I didn't bring that with me. It's significant.
Okay, do you know what?
Our total debt would be the general fund debt, the school debts, as well as water and sewer.
Do you know what, what percent of our budget is, pays for our bonds and our, that sort of thing?
What we normally do is we have an internal policy that the city has had long before I came on board to try to keep the annual debt payment at about $10 million, and we have, we have continued to do that and will continue to do that. The only reason you'll see in your budget, both last year and certainly this coming year, is that the DIRFY debt is excluded debt, and although it needs to be included as debt when we budget for it.
So in essence?
Just so, just so we know, not to interrupt you, Counsel, but in our capital improvement plan, there are projects that we already have, the city council's already authorized, so the sum of those amortized projects, including DIRFY, is about $520 million. So if you take out the DIRFY, you just minus the $263 million from that, but those are already authorized projects.
Correct.
That's correct.
So basically, yes, we do pay bond, we do pay debt down, we do pay bonds off, but we also immediately bond for other items. So essentially, we really don't pay our debt down, in essence, because we're always backfilling with something that we need.
With another project, that's correct. I mean, it fluctuates from... With another project. That's correct. I mean, it, it fluctuates from year to year, but that is correct. We would generally have, with the needs that this, a city this size has, we would generally have, um, a debt payment, um, principal and interest of approximately $10 million a year.
Okay, so let's go back to the side that, assuming, um, that there will be monies coming down. What do you think the timeline is? In other words, so how soon do these loan orders have to be approved versus if those monies become available, that would offset, um, you know, i- i- are the loan orders something that, that, that needs to be addressed right now? Can we wait to see what's coming down? How, how does that play out?
Certainly. So I, I'd like to see the loan orders, um, approved now, so these projects can get underway. Normally, what the city would do is they would utilize their own cash flow to get them started, if in fact they are able to get started. I mean, some of these jo- some of these projects have to be bid out, um, so they take some time. We don't borrow again until February of next year, so February of 2022 would be when we'd go out to borrow. Um, we would borrow short-term if the project isn't completed, and in a lot of instances, projects don't get completed in that short period of time, and then we would go out long-term after that. By then, we would certainly know whether or not any of these federal dollars would be available to use for any of these projects.
And those short-term bonds could be paid off at that time?
That's correct.
So how do you think the water and sewer infrastructure would, uh, how, what type of offset do you think there would be? What, what, what project could be funded to, to give relief to the taxpayer?
So, um, really, that's, that's probably something that, uh, Mr. Furlan and I need to sit down and talk about. But for an example, you'll be receiving from him in the near future, um, I believe it's Water Phase 21. That's going to be another 4.8, 4.9 million dollars, um, at which time he will, um, be looking for a loan order on that as well. We will include the same language in that particular loan order when it comes down so that we could utilize, um, some of these dollars, if in fact, that's what they're going to be able to use for. Um, in addition to that, as you all know, he's been, um, talking about, um, the need of a building for himself. Um, and there's, there may be some opportunity for him. I don't know whether or not that will be eligible, because again, we're back to having an interpretation of what is really going to be an eligible cost. But assuming that's an eligible cost, that might be a direction, um, the water board might want to go in with regard to the use of the funding. Um, it would theoretically reduce your water rates, and it would also reduce your stormwater fee.
Okay, in terms of the, um, building, the constru- constructing a building for Rescue 7, the 2.7 million?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Um, I think there was reference to classes would be taught, uh, in that building. Um, would people utilizing that building be paying a fee to use that space to offer classes? Or wha- what would that situation be?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. No, the classes would be the EMS, um, individuals, the paramedics.
So that would be all in-house?
In-house, yes.
Uh, okay. Would there would be no potential for anything, uh, bringing?
Not that I'm aware of. If they had the opportunity, um, to bring in a class from another community, then there certainly could be an opportunity for a fee. But unless they had, you know, some opportunity to do training to other individuals, that would be the only opportunity for, um, charging for the use of the space or for the class itself.
Something I think possibly worth looking at, because I do believe we do rent the, uh, fire academy out for different purposes for outside. Right. Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Thank you.
I just have one question, Mrs. Sahadi, on this. And we talked about this today. On page 17 on the capital plan, there's a storage facility on Bullock Street. But it, under when is the asset needed? It's under 2024. Now, we talk about saving rent, um, and we've also talked about keep purchasing equipment. We've been saying it since I started and leaving it outside. So why would this be, um, not until 2024, and what would be the difference between this building and the one, um, at the, um, current DCM building?
This, this particular building is, and I think Counselor in seat eight could probably tell you more than I can tell you about this, but this is the storage facility at the cemetery?
On Bullock Street?
On Bullock Street.
So what is going to, that, so it's, this is over the existing foundation. I know where it is.
That's correct.
Um, what's going to be housed in there?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, we really need, um, um, the director to speak to that, unless.
Counselor in seat eight.
Knows more. I, I don't know the details, but Chris Pirano would, but I don't have those details. I'm sorry.
The cemetery department also purchased new trucks. They also have, um, a backhoe there to dig graves. And all of the new equipment that we voted for before is outside because they only poured the foundation and never finished that building. So to protect all the material, that building should be taken care of. Whether they're going to do it, you know, whether they can do it with perpetual care money? I'm not sure what the perpetual care account has, but I did watch, uh, one of the park board meetings, I guess I'm bored, and, um, they were talking about, uh, expanding the cemetery. Because right now, you can't buy a plot at the cemetery. If you die, then you can go and buy a plot. But if you just want to get a pre-arrangement, you can't. And they're using money from perpetual to do some of that. So they might not have enough money.
And that might be one of the areas that could certainly be an eligible expense with the new American relief money.
So I'm glad to see that it's on here, but I'm not glad to see that it's three more years away. We, we keep purchasing equipment and, and leaving it outside. And we have another one on our agenda tonight for the, um, the bucket truck and the backhoe or excavator, or whatever it was. So, um, why would we have chosen 2024 rather than sooner?
Well, basically, we look at, first of all, it's the department, or the department head that pretty much, um, provides us with the data as to what year they would feel that there is a necessity to do a particular project. So, um, to begin, it begin, it begins at the department level, but it also, from my point of view, I, I look at all of the projects that are out there, um, together with the administration, and try to look at what the debt service is going to be, so we keep within the $10 million.
Okay. Oh, oh, if there's a, a chance that that could be moved up, um, I think that's important as well as the information coming down for the other building. With that, I yield.
I will keep that in mind.
Thank you, Counselor in seat eight, Counselora Pereira.
The only thing that I want to add is that I did meet with the mayor and Mrs. Sahadi during the briefing, talking about all of this money that we may potentially get from the CARES Act, et cetera, with the water and sewer. I know there's another project to be done, but let's all be very cognizant. It's what I told the mayor, whether they can do it or not. But everybody took a hit this year with COVID. We raised taxes 2.5%, but when the bills went out and the property values were raised, people paid a lot more than 2.5%. So if there's any way to not do a 2.5% on taxes next year to give homeowners some sort of a break or a way not to raise water and sewer, the Florida taxpayer has really had a difficult time this year, as we all have had. And since we're getting this money and we're able to do some other things that we can catch up on, I'm all for that. But I think if we can in any way use any of this money, one time, to just lower something, it's not going to be perpetual, but anything that we can do, water, sewer, and taxes, then I think the administration, um, should do that. I would support that 100%. And I know he said, "I'll try," but just want to remind you, to remind him, try harder. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, here, no further discussion. I just wa- uh, before, I recognize Counselor Cadim. I just want to make a comment to Counselora Pereira's point. You know, I think, um, and I had this same conversation with the mayor and our Counsel Vice President today on our phone call, that, um, relief to the taxpayer, I believe that's obviously important as we look into seeing 70-something million dollars. But I'd really like to start having these discussions sooner rather than later on budget planning and finding a way, if we're going to be receiving this money, we have to spend it under a certain amount of time to really have honest discussions about how we're going to be able to utilize that money that will give us a long-term return on investment. So I know Counselors, uh, specifically Counselor in seat two, has been speaking about this for years before she even got on the council, is about a transfer station. You know, if we could look at something like that, wherever it may be, that will be able to utilize revenues and be long-term sustainable revenues, I think that would be very important as we go forward. And I indicated that to the mayor, and, and Mrs. Sahadi knows. I just wanted to make that comment again. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Cadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of questions. So the loan orders, uh, Counselor in seat two alluded to the, uh, 11 million dollars in loan orders, so that's what's before us tonight, including the schools. Is that where that was coming from?
That would be correct.
Just so I follow. Okay. So based on, I guess, assuming that we receive no additional federal monies coming down, um, obviously, it passed through, through the state to us. Is that all we're looking for, for capital items for FY '22?
Um, no, Counselor. So a- as I indicated a couple of minutes ago, I believe the, um, DCM building is, um, being worked on at the moment. It just wasn't completed. And you will see, I, although it's not general fund debt service, you will see Phase 21.
Yeah, besides, yeah, besides that piece. I, I guess I was just looking.
Those two are the only other ones that I'm aware of at this point that would be coming down to this council.
Okay, so I was just trying to figure out of the...
20 million. It brings you just shy of the 20 million.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I moved it. So the 23.1, um, schools account, uh, I'm sorry, bond authorization needed, so, because it was broken down. So the, uh, let's just call it 17 million that we were looking for, 7 million coming from the schools, the rest being, uh, the city. 11 million dollars, uh, is, is here. So we're not anticipating any of this other stuff, these other items outside of the DPW facility and?
No, Counselor, because we would be theoretically close to the 20 million dollars at that time.
Okay. And then in terms of the pay-as-you-go capital items that we see here for FY '22, are those going to be covered in the FY '22 budget? I know you're still working that.
So we're still working on that, I believe, and, and don't hold me to this because I didn't bring my budget documents with me, but I believe we have about 1.6 million dollars of capital items, um, in the, um, '22 budget that we will hopefully use one-time money to fund.
Okay. And then just, just in terms of the, and I, I said this before, for the DPW facility, I know we're talking about a storage facility. Um, you know, when we start looking at what we've done, you know, in the schools, the police department, public safety buildings, things of that nature, we've, we've always put investments towards those buildings. Uh, we've got a water department building that's going up now. We've got a lot of the, uh, debt service coming off, uh, from the schools. I think now would be the time to at least have a feasibility study, you know, presented to the council. And I mentioned this the last time we were talking about it, whether it made sense to really do a complete construction project over, of the, uh, off the Lewiston Street facility versus just putting up, uh, a storage facility. Because every year, we're dealing with a number of equipment that's coming in. We're, um, struggling with office space. We're paying rent for storage. So from, from my standpoint, just as one Counselor, I, I prefer to, you know, spend 50 or $100,000 on a feasibility studies to say, this is what a full building project would cost the city. And then this is what the, uh, storage facility would cost the city, and really try to get a, a true needs analysis for the department as to what it is that they're looking for and what makes more sense. Because if we're going to continue to invest in, you know, these, uh, capital items, especially equipment, and we are going to run out of the storage or of space for that storage system, I prefer to just do it once and do it right, and have a, a facility that would last us, you know, 50 to 100 years with the proper ma- with the proper maintenance. So that's just from my standpoint. I know a feasibility study is, is a quick turnaround. Um, it's nothing that goes into construction drawings, but you can get a, a conceptual floor plan of what it, what it is and what you have, and then get some cost estimates associated with the construction and things of that nature, so that at least this council will be able to make an educated decision as to, do we want just a storage building? Or do we want a, a full facility? And again, just looking at price and being able to analyze as the debt comes off, what the impact would really be to the operational budget. Because if, if we're maintaining that $10 million, then we're leveraging our monies, and we're not really, um, tapping into, you know, taxpayers' monies, right? Because we've got that level-funded budget, so.
And that's exactly what I do when I look at what we're presenting to you. I look at what's coming off and what the amortization would be, because certainly, the amortization for different pieces of the loan orders would get amortized over different years.
And I know, uh, Counsel President has made the statement that he'd like to see the school department, uh, stop picking up some of the debt payments. I know that's not net school spending eligible. And considering that the school committee is willing to, uh, throw its jurisdiction to the superintendent, maybe if Counsel President would be willing to sit down with, uh, the wonderful leadership over at Rock Street, maybe he can convince him to, to actually, you know, say that he'll pay for some debt without the school committee even having to approve it, since he's got carte blanche of the, uh, line on our budgets. So if you want to mine, try and reach out to him.
No problem.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselora Pereira.
Um, just to follow up with my colleague in seat number one. Uh, I did have a meeting with a company that had called me that wanted to look at ways of helping the city reduce trash fees. And we did have a meeting, um, preliminarily to find out what's what. But one of the things that we talked about was Lewiston Street Garage. And if we are going to do a capital outlay project there, and I agree, we shouldn't just put up a building there. The inside is a mess. I think, uh, Counselor Peckham said that when his father worked there 20-something years ago, it was the same as it is today. Nothing was kept up. Ironically, if you go to the bottom of Lewiston Street to the left, that land was sold for single-family houses. I don't know who wants to have a single-family house in that area with, but it was sold, and that's what the plan is. So we need a bigger location, maybe another location. Maybe we should have bought that land. But we need to have a building that has conveyor belts so that you can do some separation with compactors in the back. So if it's all glass, now that's a commodity, you're going to get money. If it's all cardboard, that's a commodity, you're going to get money. We need to learn how to start saving money or making money with the trash to cut down on, you know, what we're, what we're spending, because if people aren't recycling, then you have dirty loads, the price goes up. But tomorrow, we do have, and Counselor, uh, Dion is on that committee, we do have a meeting, uh, with the trash, um, the trash committee that the mayor put together. So some of those items will be, um, spoken about. But if we have money to do that, you know, years ago, a transfer station, when people voted on it, was feasible. It's not feasible now with the homes that are there, and with the fact that Republic, BFI, whatever they call themselves today, they have a transfer station, and it is not operational yet. It's gotten all of the permitting needed, but it's not operational because they need to get other communities to bring things there to make that transfer station lucrative. It's not lucrative now. So we wouldn't be able to do it. But I think if, if I was going to make an investment in, you know, Lewiston Street or in, uh, the DCM department, I would think that that would be a worthwhile investment for the community. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President.
Can I just make one clarification? Mr. Perry has texted me. They're already, um, on, the feasibility, feasibility study is already underway.
For DPW?
For DPW, yes.
For a building? I'm sorry. Point of clarification.
Yeah. For a building, Mrs. Sahadi?
Uh, I believe it's for the entire property. So a building, um, remodeling, rehabbing, tearing down the current building, um, acquiring some land that is adjacent to where they are now. So it would be a complete feasibility study.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President.
Sorry, I had one other question. Mrs. Sahadi, the item six on our agenda tonight, the 2.7 for the EMS for Rescue 7, is that the same as the garage office space on the capital improvement plan for EMS?
It is.
And so why is it 1.8 million on the capital improvement plan, but 2.7 on the loan order?
Because once they finally went through, and this would be something the chief and Mr. Gallagher could speak to, but once they determine that they want, they, their real needs included more than just a garage. Um, we're now at 2.7 million.
Okay, and then the other question I have, it was talked about a lot during the last administration, and I haven't really heard anything at all about it, is firefighter and EMS are supposed to be merging? That was the big plan. Um, so I'm wondering, and we, and we talked about this today on the phone as well. We have existing buildings that, uh, our fire department has that are in rough shape, specifically Stanley Street and, and Center Station. So I'm just curious why we'd be building this just for EMS, and what is our plan for those other two stations?
So this, this particular, and I, and again, really, these questions really should go to, um, the Director Olivera as well as Chief Lynch, but, um, they are, they have outgrown all being in, um, headquarters in the first place. Um, to your question with regard to combined, um, departments, certainly, um, that is the will of the city and... and they are working on that, but that is going to be quite some time. Any new firefighters that come on, I believe, need to be paramedics, but we, you know, certainly have, um, an aging staff that are not paramedics, so combining them is going to take, take some time. With regard to Stanley Street and, and Central Fire Station, you know, we've talked about that in the past, nothing has progressed with regard to those two stations with the current administration. Stanley Street, um, as, as we talked about today, needs some significant repairs, but with the new trucks and the turnaround, um, requirements, they are unable to utilize that space the way they really need to. There was some discussion in the prior administration to, um, move Stanley Street across the street on the, um, Cotton and Mudarris Lot, but as you know, that's going to need some, um, discussion and negotiations with DHCD. And with regard to Central Station, um, again, the current administration hasn't really, um, sat down and really talked about Central Station, but that is a station that Chief Lynch was adamant and passionate about, um, keeping. And so, Chris Gallagher has been util- utilizing some of his funding to do the repairs that are necessary, at least to keep Central, um, in a workable, or as a workable station.
Okay, um, Council President, are these loan orders going to be referred to finance?
So, the city side, yes, the capital improvement plan items will be referred to finance tonight, with the exception of school department-related items. So, just everybody's clear, uh, Mrs. Sahadi is going to have to work on separating that for a future, uh, meeting, so that we can vote on the capital projects separate from school.
But the loan orders under priority matters and full agenda, those going to go to finance?
They will be, they need to be referred, uh, and be published, yes.
Thank you, all right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Seat Five, Councilor Lee.
Thank you, so we, when we were discussing the, uh, storage facility, I know that was one of the topics that I brought up when we were having the budget sessions, um, the most recent bu- budget session. And, you know, in my mind, I was thinking if we had a storage facility, we would be able to cut down the cost on the rental. However, listening to, you know, some of the other councils here, it's, it's not, it would be, it would be better to have one facility where we had, you know, just, not just the storage, but the operation as well. But also, if we had multiple storage areas, then we'd have to worry about maintenance, you know, even, even in some cases, possibly security in some of these places as well, so, um, over, over a span of time, it would actually be more of a savings to have one facility where we can keep everything rather than multiple ones, I'm assuming. But, you know, over, eh, eh, overall, I think that, that would, I think that would be the best option for us. In regards to the transfer station, and Council Pereira mentioned it, uh, it's something that I mentioned when we, even when we voted for it back, back then. There's multiple places, I believe, around us that have transfer stations, and, and it's not profitable if you're not able to collect sanitation from other towns and cities. It would almost leave us with an expense without a profit in return. It could really, it could, we could fall on our faces, um, if, if we, if we build something that's not really going to be utilized for profit, or to bring us a benefit in some way, either reducing costs or something to that nature. Now, granted, it might be able to ru- reduce costs, but it very likely will not bring us a profit unless we are a, a commodity, unless, unless people need to bring their trash to us, as it did when we had the landfill. So, I, I, I really think we have to be, you know, cautious of that going forward when we say we're going to have a transfer station. It may not be as, it may not be what we think it may be in two thousand twenty-one, and when we look forward to, to two thousand twenty-five or so. One thing that I know we talked about in our subcommittee, uh, the, uh, Health and Environmental Affairs Subcommittee was waste-to-energy options, uh, I still, uh, I presented some documentation about anaerobic digestion. There are, uh, towns, a little bit smaller than Fall River, but towns and cities that do, um, have anaerobic digesters, and I believe that's something that could also be utilized, um, if, if we look into it, and it wouldn't be an expensive, uh, investment. And I also know, um, that some towns use anaerobic digestion, uh, for sewer, uh, water as well, to handle sewage as well, and that could also be a benefit, got to look into it, in my opinion, but, uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, and Seat Two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, um, in terms of the transfer station, um, it's interesting, because back when we did get that question on the ballot, the then DMC, DCM Director, um, gave me a full tour of Lewiston Street, we had lengthy discussions. Yes, though, though those properties have been built, there are those that do believe, um, that the property still could potentially be adequate to build a transfer station. There was a plan back then, there was a schematic drawing, um, there, you know, there still are commodities, cardboard is still a commodity, um, the plan that existed back then did include conveyor belts. It did include two-stream, um, recycling, as opposed to the single-stream recycling that we do today. You know, anytime that, and I'm not saying it's, it's the answer, I'm not saying that it's something that's going to come to fruition, but I think everything is worth examining. I think anytime that, especially as a municipality, that you're dependent on others, you also risk, uh, potential extreme costs, because you're dependent on somebody else to provide a service. You know, anytime that, that you can unilaterally do something or take care of yourself, you're better off when you're in the driver's seat. Without that transfer station being, um, what should I say, overly huge, it would have had the capacity to service, um, s- some of the towns that surround us. So, I don't think it's something that should be just dismissed. And actually, back then, um, when I did the presentation to the city council, I also, also, um, also, also, discussed anaerobic digestion, uh, the potential for creating CNG, which you can buy vehicles, you can provide CNG to power your vehicles, which is another savings. So, there was a lot to it, and there's still a lot that we can, um, we can look at and, and discuss before dismissing the idea, with that, I yield.
Thank you, um, while I know this really isn't a topic for, um, what we're talking about here when it comes to capital improvements, I just kind of want to make a comment, because we're talking about that mighty trash thing that we always tend to, uh, talk about. Mrs. Sahadi, we've been, um, having discussions since July of last year on the trash waste policies, and I know Mr. Perry is not here, um, but I'm sure you've been part of some of those. Are we still studying those numbers and those policies that we've been asking for, for, for a while?
You're right, Mr. Perry is not here, so, I'm not sure exactly where they're at. I do know that the, um, task force, the trash task force is meeting, I believe, tomorrow. Tomorrow, so they have been working on it, um, with COVID, I don't believe they've actually met as many times as they probably would have liked to, um, Counselor in Seat Two is shaking her head no. So, I'm not exactly sure where everyone is at with regard to, um, that data.
Yeah, and I know that's a committee that the mayor put together, but I guess it's more internal questions and policy. So, Mrs. Sahadi, with, um, with that being said, could you circle back to the council on that? We've been waiting for that for a while, um, and I'd appreciate it if you could circle back to us through email in terms of where that is at when you have a chance to speak to Mr. Perry. Councilman Seat Eight? Councilman Seat Eight?
Mr. President, the committee is working on that, that's part of what the task force is doing. We've had, I believe, two meetings so far, and then some people were sick, some we couldn't get a Zoom session. So, tomorrow is the meeting, but those numbers are being looked at, just to let you know. When we have them, we'd certainly share them with the council.
Thank you, any further discussion? Councilman Seat One, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you, I thought I used up all my time, never recognizing me. Just on, on page eighteen for the capital items, so, Councilman Seat Four brought up that there was only, she's not seeing any repairs for buildings, so over the next five years, is there another place where we can find capital items for the fire department buildings? Because I don't see anything on there, I mean, we, we have a maintenance shop, emergency generator, we've got the SCBA's, uh, fire dispatch system, we've got a brush fire truck, we've got a engine, command vehicle, a ladder truck, um, looks like five or so electric vehicles, another engine and a command vehicle. I'm not seeing anything in terms of, unless I, I missed it.
No, you're, you're probably not, so these are the items that were presented to us by Chief Lynch. Anything that is building repairs, um, Mr. Gallagher has been trying to include them in his operating budget on an annual basis, so that we're not bonding for, um, repairs, so, the Counselor, um...
So, I guess how, I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but how would we as a council know what the repairs are if we're not seeing them here, right? So, roofs on, um, all the, you know, the fire stations, we've got a number of fire stations, so we don't know, you know, if, you know, the condition of the roofs, whether they're fair, good, excellent conditions, HVAC systems, you know, you know, obviously if there's a useful life, what the rating is, things like that, in terms of, you know, being properly prepared to, to, Councilman Seat Four's point, uh, be able to maintain this. I think some of these, these repairs for these fire stations, um, you know, exceed what we po- potentially could be doing or a- able to do internally.
Well, I can certainly bring that back to both, um, Mr. Gallagher and the chief, and ask them to revisit the repairs to the specific stations, and I can get back to you with any particular, um, additions that they may want to make, um, to this plan. So, again, as you know, the plan is kind of ongoing, um, it changes annually, actually changes probably monthly and daily, because we've added things and taken things off since it was actually prepared back in December of two thousand twenty. But I can certainly reach out to both those individuals and, and speak specifically to, um, roof repairs or other major type repairs to the, the actual stations.
And then, um, I, I mean, I would extend that to the police station, you know, obviously government center, and then even the library, right? Library was, we're talking about twenty years now, right, since that roof was, was done, so I...
Didn't we just do the roof?
Did we do, just do the roof? Maybe we did, I don't know.
I thought we just did the roof.
But I know there was major repairs, and, you know, they, they had to move out for a little while and stuff like that, but that was a while ago, so...
I thought we just did the roof at the library, but I can check on the library as well.
But those are the types of things in terms of, especially for infrastructure and, and our buildings, that we want to be able to stop planning for and, and looking at to see on a, on an actual capital item listed plan, so that, you know, we can question whether or not we want to go out and bond for major building repairs. With that, I yield.
Thank you, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to refer the five-year capital improvement plan on the city?
Motion made, second.
On the city's, uh, capital plans minus the school department to full council?
Motion made.
Motion made by Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Peckham, discussion on the referral. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is transfers and appropriations, uh, see item three. The new item on this, uh, agenda is the mayor and the appropriation order following a one point two-eight-two-five-two-nine for the, uh, from the employer trust fund to the school appropriation, and four hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars from the state and county assessments to school appropriation. Mrs. Sahadi?
Um, yes, certainly, so, um, a- as you know, um, the end-of-the-year report is due to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on an annual basis sometime in the October timeframe. That was reported and included, um, by Mr. Almeida, um, back when it was due, um, in the fall of last year. At that time, um, his report and our report indicated that the net school spending would be short approximately one point two million dollars. The DESI then takes the information and reviews it and populates the, um, charter school, um, reimbursement and assessment. And so, with the change in the enrollment and the change in the population of the, that data by DESI, uh, an additional four hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars was, uh, or is due to the school department with regard to state and lo- local, state and county assessments, which is primarily the charter school. The one point two million dollars is the, um, overestimate that, um, the city and the school department had with regard to health insurance, particularly as it relates to, again, the pandemic. Health insurance was significantly less in expenditures and claims paid, uh, than what we had originally anticipated. And so, this order is moving the one point two million dollars out of the employer trust fund to the school appropriation and reducing the state and county assessment also to the school appropriation account. So, what this order does is it completes, um, the fiscal year two thousand twenty with net school spending being at one hundred percent.
And just so I'm clear, Mrs. Sahadi, you said that is going to, that's for FY twenty. So, last fiscal year, we're meeting our obligations at a hundred percent in net school spending with this one point two million dollar transfer, correct?
That's correct.
Very good, questions, comments? Councilman Seat Two, Councilor Dion.
So, if, when these, if these transfers are, are made, does that bring us to a hundred percent of net school spending for this year?
It brings us to a hundred percent of net school spending for the fiscal year ended, um, June thirty-two thousand twenty. For June thirty-two thousand twenty-one, which is the year we're in, um, the same process will apply. We have estimated health insurance at the beginning of the year, based on, um, projections that Diane LaFlash has provided to us. Mr. Almeida and myself have talked about those, we've both included the same amount as the estimates, based on those estimates, again, that were provided by, um, Mrs. LaFlash. And as far as the enrollment goes, or the charter school assessment goes, DESI is responsible for updating that data once they have the final end-of-the-year report. So, we will not know about fiscal twenty-one until approximately February of fiscal twenty-two.
So, essentially, uh, twenty-one will be still, will be, as usual, carried over into the following budget.
That's correct, um, we will, uh, Mr. Almeida and myself, what we've done in the past is we will do an estimate of the health insurance as we get closer to the end of the year. As, as you know, certainly, with the vaccine available, you've got more people starting to use their health insurance that may not have been using it at the beginning of the year, so, um, we are certainly, um, experimenting a savings right now as we stand, and quite frankly, there will be an additional amount due, um, because we've overestimated health insurance yet again. Not to anyone's fault, but because, you know, there was some thought last May or April when we were putting the budget together, or even into July and August when you had one-month budgets, that the pandemic would have ended sooner than it is, and that a lot of the elective surgery would have happened in this fiscal year, you know, as we approach the spring, the question will be, um, will there be a spike in health insurance claims, or will we also have another year of some significant savings?
Or will it occur before the end of the fiscal year or after?
That's right, that's right, so we are, we're certainly prepared to, you know, fund, um, net school spending at a hundred percent. That's always been the administrator's, administration's goal, um, but unfortunately, with such an unknown, it's hard to really know what that number's going to be in advance.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilman Seat Eight, Councilor Pereira.
Mrs. Sahadi, you know this employer trust fund gives me agnirs when I read this.
I do.
Because I know that the, um, Insurance Advisory Commission, you know, really thinks that the city should have seventy-five percent if they put in twenty-five percent, et cetera. But with this amount that you want to take from employer's trust fund, what will be left in the employer? What's the amount that we have now in the employer trust fund?
At the end of, um, fiscal year two thousand twenty, I believe we had, and I didn't bring that with me this evening, so I probably shouldn't even speak to the numbers, but I believe at June thirty-two thousand twenty, we had three point eight million dollars in there, and we, it has increased, um, over the last six or seven months into this fiscal year.
Now, do we know in talking to...
That is the highest the balance has been.
It's the highest in a long time.
In a long, long time, that's correct.
Do we know if Diane LaFlash, what projections has she given us as far as insurance rates going up? Are they going to stay the same, lower?
Certainly, so, so we've had meetings with her with regard to open enrollment, and, you know, our fiscal two thousand twenty-two, at this particular point, there'll be no increase in the rates, um, going forward into the next fiscal year, because of the savings that have existed, and because of a few changes that have been made in the program itself, um, for the next, um, open enrollment.
Well, that, that's good to hear. Now, if we haven't used a lot of health insurance money, people aren't doing, you know, just elective surgeries or whatever, then that tells me that the employee fund must have an excess amount of money as well. Have you heard anything about people getting a holiday?
Um, yes, certainly, Counselor. So the, the employee trust fund also is at probably the highest, if not the second highest it's been at in the last 10 years. There has been some discussion by the IAC, I believe it is.
Right.
Thank you, to provide employees with a holiday. There has been two holidays that I'm aware of. I did some analysis on this just the other day for the mayor. I believe it was 2011 and then 2017. I think in 2011, there were two holidays that were provided to the employees. I don't know if Counsel Kadim remembers that. And then in 2017, I believe there was one holiday provided.
Okay. Well, I mean, hopefully, if they can provide a holiday, that will help people. And I'm happy to hear that the rates are not going to go up. Everything else does. So I'm happy to hear that's stabilized. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Mrs. Sahadi, do you know if there's going to be any additional transfers from the city side to the school department side with the exception of the end-of-year report for FY 2021?
The only other transfer that may or may not come down, and it really just depends on health insurance, but if, if the health insurance is a significant amount, we may estimate some portion of it prior to the end of the fiscal year so that the school department can have it for their purposes. But at this particular point, I would say no.
So the school department hasn't indicated anything else besides end-of-year report and possible health care, health care claims?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Consul in seat one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in terms of the transfer, I know we're more than halfway through, almost three-quarters of the way. So the $1.2 million, that's gonna, or $1.3 million, so have you had the conversation, I know you and I talked about it, but have you had the conversation with the school department in terms of their ability to spend within the next quarter or so?
We have Mr. Pacheco here. I think he might be able to speak to being able to spend some portion or all portion or all of that $1.7 million because that's really the total in this fiscal year.
Mr. Pacheco, you can come on down.
At this particular point, there's Ursa One money, Ursa Two money, there's this money. So I'm sure the school department to get Mr. Pacheco together with Mr. Almeida.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the superintendent, the superintendent went on record saying that the school department has a lot of money that he wasn't worried about, you know, saving the district $250,000 for out-of-district placement by trying to go on and be part of a collaborative. So my concern is, is that if the superintendent is not concerned about saving $250,000 because they have a flush with money, we're going to throw another $1.2 million to the schools, 1.3. I'm just afraid that they're not going to spend it and then, you know, we're just not meeting net, net school spending for FY '20, and then we've got this worse of a rollover impact.
Mr. Pacheco, if you can elaborate a little on that. I know there was discussion last night at the school committee meeting, I believe Mr. Aguirre asked the question, this school department's going to be getting the $1.2 million. We only have a couple of months of spends. There was discussion about circuit breakers, circuit breaker accounts and stuff like that. Can you elaborate a little bit on, to Counsel Kadim's point?
What I can tell you is that if, if the school committee approves the expenditure of these dollars as they have in the last few years, we do have projects that are shovel-ready, so to speak.
Okay.
That we would probably move on them. We currently have a couple of, I don't want to call them emergencies because we're at the end of the heating season, but we do have some situations in schools that we would like to attend to, but we also have other capital projects of high interest in the district that we would like to do. Now that, I'm saying that, but the, the school committee obviously would need to, to push that to those directions, which they have in the past.
Yeah. Your capital projects, what do they range in terms of dollar amounts roughly?
Projects that I have?
Yeah.
More money than I'm getting.
Okay. But I'm just talking about when you're looking at particular ones.
So we, we, some of the projects that are, that are in the queue would be the access roads at Henry Lloyd, which is just about shovel-ready. We're finishing up design work and engineering and construction docks. We have Talbot drainage work, parking lot, pavement, sidewalks improvements. So those two are probably 700, 800,000 combined. We have the Sylvia School with another access road, a second egress out of that property, which is a little bit more in detail because we have some conservation issues that we would be working, walking through. But I, I have boilers at Henry Lloyd, vicinity of about 250, 300,000 that are, are ready to go. So.
All right. I appreciate that. I tried to get you to go home early, but you're sticking around. And since School Committee Man Aguirre is sitting in the audience, if you wouldn't mind passing along to the superintendent, Mr. Pacheco did mention that he did have boilers and tune of $250,000. So if the superintendent doesn't feel that joining a collaborative board to save the district $250,000 wasn't worth it, if he joined, we might have been able to get a couple of boilers for some schools. So if you wouldn't mind passing that along. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there no referrals necessary? This was just for discussion purposes. Hearing no further business before the Committee on Finance, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. For our city council meeting, will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Valerie LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponte?
Here. If everybody in this chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. And a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and a loan order in the amount of $4,911,47 for phase-two repairs to the Samuel Watson Elementary School. This item was objected to at the February 23 meeting.
Will she refer to finance?
We would need a motion to lift the item from the table first.
Motion made.
Actually, it would be appropriate to lift the item from the table first before we authorize it to be published. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion on lifting the item from the table. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to refer and publish.
Motion to, uh, motion for the item to be authorized and published and referred to the Committee on Finance would be appropriate, made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Lee. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor in a loan order in the amount of $1,800,000 for constructing a synthetic turf varsity baseball field at BMC Durfee High School. This loan order was also objected to at the last council meeting.
Motion to lift.
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by Counsel Deion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion on lifting the item from the table. Consul in seat two, Counsel Deion. On just lifting the item from the table.
Okay. No, not, not a discussion on the item?
Uh, that's going to be next. Motion to lift the item from the table has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to refer to finance and publish.
Motion to authorize it to be published and refer to finance has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Peckham. Discussion, Consul in seat two, Counsel Deion.
Yeah. I don't know. Since our last meeting, I've done some research on this, on the field. And I think, I think $1.8 million is a lot of money to be spent on a field. I'm not thrilled about the artificial turf. There are health hazards. There are environmental hazards. Artificial turf have a history of injuries that don't go along with natural grass. Let's see. We have, we would have to, and I don't see it listed in the breakdown, that you'd also have to have additional equipment costs to maintain and take care of the artificial turf. I imagine that the, the city, that the, the Durfee already owns the equipment to take care of natural grass. So I don't know what would happen with that equipment. But however, we'd have to invest in brand-new to take care of artificial turf. Artificial turf would have to be replaced, you know, maybe eight, 10 years down the road, probably another half a million dollar investment. I have multiple articles here on injuries, things talking about, we have right here, which has nothing to do with injuries, but 2018 report by Yale scientists showing that chemicals in the rubber affect health, cancer-causing agents, irritants that cause asthma, skin irritations. I think we are going to be subjecting our children to some potential health hazards that, that they don't need to be subjected to. Even though, whoops. Let's see. Where is it? I have, let's see. Studies at the collegiate level also raise concerns of Division One athletes who competed on artificial turf experience injuries to posterior ligament, which is at the back of the knee and connects the femur to tibia, at nearly three times the rate of those competing on natural grass. There was another study done which showed 900, uh, let's see if I can find it here. There was over 900 injuries, 300 and change occur on regular grass, over almost 600 more on artificial surfaces. So I suppose I've made my point in terms of injuries that, then I also have, if I can find it, I'm being a little, get it mixed up a little bit here. Come on. Just bear with me for a second. Another fact that says it's a myth that synthetic fields require less maintenance, the natural turf grass fields or other, or that synthetic turf fields are maintenance-free. Synthetic fields require additional infill irrigation because of unacceptability of high temperatures and warm sunny days. Chemical disinfectants, sprays to reduce static cling and odors, drainage repair and maintenance, erasing and repainting temporary lines and removing organic accumulation. Maintaining a natural grass field is slightly more expensive than a turf field, but not by a significant margin. Plus, if one takes into consideration the $500,000 that must be paid every eight to 10 years to replace the carpet of an artificial turf field, and the fact that it is at least $250,000 more expensive to implement than using natural grass, natural grass ends up being cheaper in the short and long term. Now, again, I'm not against new fields. I'm not against giving our athletes quality fields. I am against something that potentially creates an environmental hazard, a health hazard, and could cause more injuries to our athletes, and something that is going to cost the taxpayer financially more than is necessary. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Is there counselors who have questions for Mr. Mr. Pacheco? And I know School Committee Man Aguirre is here.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion, motion to waive the rules for Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Aguirre to come down has been made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Gentlemen. Counselor in seat four. Counsel Vice President, you want the floor?
I was just going to make a motion. I don't know if Counselor in seat two wants the floor.
Counsel in seat two, do you want the floor back to ask?
Yeah, just ask a couple of questions if I may.
Great, fair enough.
See, and I went on a rant. I should give him the opportunity to respond.
I'll give you the floor back. Counsel in seat two.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just a clarification. Are we voting on this tonight? I thought this was going to finance.
So the item on our agenda tonight is to authorize it to be published and refer to the Committee on Finance. That's a motion that's on the table right now that is being discussed.
Okay. So, equipment costs for the type of equipment that you would need to maintain the artificial turf is not included in this, correct?
It is not. We do have the equipment already. We have two artificial surfaces currently, a football field and a practice football field, soccer field.
Do we have a number on the price of what a traditional field would cost versus the artificial turf field?
Your numbers were correct. It's slightly less. I want to say slightly less. It's $300,000 less. However, as we've seen in city fields, so the Brooklyn Park field before was an artificial surface, we only allowed games played on that because the field needs an opportunity to rest. Can't play after a rainy day on regular fields, on most fields. I don't want to say all. So with the artificial surface, the playability of that field is much greater. Durfee did not play a home game last year. A couple of counselors visited the site. This is March, and we did have snow this winter. But those fields are probably, at best, four to six weeks away from being able to cut grass on them. That's how wet the field is. So artificial surface takes away that particular piece. They're built with drainage and the surface itself. 10 years, a lot of advancements have come through since those fields were installed on the football fields and also the Brooklyn Park field. There's a lot of changes. Not all the infield, the stuff that's inside the artificial surface is rubber. There are a lot of other, you know, alternatives to that now. I would say the number-one advantage of the artificial field is the fact that it is playable. It's playable for that eight-to-10-year period, as many hours a day as you can rent it out or as you can use it. Regular fields are not going to take that kind of abuse, so to speak. So that's number one. Number two, we know that there's maintenance involved in these fields because we currently have them. We have two at Durfee and we have one at, at CUS. The, in the 2022 budget, FY 2022, we added a groundskeeper that would just take care of artificial surfaces. So the manpower, so to speak, is there in that particular budget proposal. And any additional equipment that is needed would, would be purchased if, if what we have is not adequate to take care of those fields.
Now, with the artificial turf, now, obviously, natural grass absorbs water. The artificial turf does not. There would be runoff involved, correct?
So there's drainage underneath the artificial surface. The water passes through the surface, and underneath there's a series of drainage, drainage configuration that allows all that water to be taken away. The field is approximately two to two-and-a-half feet too low. So it's holding water. The conservation area behind it and the fact that there's conservation land about 800 feet from it is, is an indication that it's a very wet area in the back of Durfee. So the field needs to be raised. Some drainage swales need to be installed so that we push the water where we want it to go into the new drainage system that's been installed with the new high school layout and parking lots. And hopefully have the same results that we've had with all of those neighbors. I'm not saying we got rid of the water problem that they had, but on rainy days, on stormy days, if that road was in better shape, it wouldn't look like it used to look, a foot and a half of water traveling across. And there were days when I, my trash bins were floating down the, the land there, and 100 of them were sitting inside a drainage ditch because they got, they floated away. That stuff isn't happening anymore. Some of that work has been because of Durfee High School and the extensive drainage work that's been involved in that. So the Tanzi School, which is adjacent to Durfee, when both of them touched this five-acre piece of land, conservation land in between the two schools, that land and that particular area surrounding that land brings an awful lot of water to that baseball field. And so that's the first piece. So whether we put an artificial field in or whether we put a natural field in, that drainage work has to be done.
Correct.
That's a major port of, portion of all of this. There would be fencing. The project does not include lights, however. It's probably going to be bid out as an alternate so that that field could be used like many other high schools at, you know, games at night, like our other fields.
So there's a line item here that says $155,000 base and finishing stone subbase. Is that what we're talking about?
Right.
That would be whether it was natural turf or artificial.
Oh, that would be in there.
That is the base.
Right, that would be in there no matter what.
So essentially, the artificial turf, we're looking at 527, 650, 675, give or take $690,000 just for the artificial turf surface.
More or less, yes.
And it'd be about $300,000 less for natural grass.
Right, so, and just a comparison, when we were, when we were working on the Brooklyn Park, every year, every two years, that particular park would take about $200,000 to bring into shape. And that's, so you would figure that every couple of years, we would need to bring some work in. I'm not saying $200,000 worth, but we would need to do upkeep on that regularly. Maintaining an artificial surface field is not like maintaining a turf field. And as I said, the playability of that artificial surface is immediate. The snow melts, you stop playing baseball. With this field, even the regular field with the good drainage, it's going to take a little bit more time. And again, playing after rainy days, even with the best of drainage, we could be ripping up fields, you know, if we're playing on it too early. So I'm not saying it's, with the good drainage, that it's not going to be a very good field and well-maintained, but the playability of a field that's artificial is just no comparison to a regular turf field. And most of the high schools that are doing their renovations, Totten High School just did a major renovation of their varsity field, and it was done this way. And there's a, there's a whole host of other local schools. New Bedford Vocas had an artificial football field for a while. And New Bedford High School is doing some major renovations. So it is the way that most of these schools are going because of the playability.
There's another excerpt here that I'll read to you.
Sure.
Because I think it relates to a line item, but I'm not sure. It says, "A study for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection analyzed lead and other metals and dust kicked into the air by physical activity on five artificial turf fields. The results suggest that even low levels of activity on the field can cause particulate matter containing these chemicals to get into the air where it can be inhaled and be harmful. The authors state that since no level lead exposure is considered safe for children, only a comprehensive mandated testing of fields can provide assurance that no health hazard in these fields exists from lead or other metals used in their construction and maintenance." So, in the, again, in these line items, I see synthetic turf testing, $12,000. Is that testing relating to that statement, or is that something totally separate?
So, there's a test called the GMAX test, which basically has a compression rate. I'm probably not using the proper terminology, but what you want to see is that there's a certain amount of cushion. You don't want it hitting like you're hitting the driveway in your yard. So, this basically would give that certain amount of compression when someone falls on that field, football, baseball, no matter what. And that test is done, not annually, especially at the beginning of the use of the field. But as time wears on, you would do that test more often. So, again, it's maintenance that we currently do on our football fields, the GMAX test. We will be doing it at CUS within the next year and a half, two years.
Okay, so that probably relates.
It's not that other test, no.
It's not that, okay, which, again, it's a health issue. So that probably relates more to this other statistic that rate, that the rate of ACL sprains are 60%, 67% higher on field turf than it is on natural turf. So that's where the cushion comes in and checking that out. I think. So, I think that's all I have for right now. I appreciate the discussion. Like I say, I, I mean, I am truly concerned with it. I don't know, anything that compromises health and environment and injury to children, I don't know. I don't know that I can agree with this material being used, but thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre, I know was welcomed down. Do you want to share any comments on this, Mr. Aguirre?
Sure, thank you, Counsel. I just want to make sure everybody knows I'm just one school committee member. It's, I'm here because I think this field is something that's near and dear to me. I'm a baseball guy. I was part of the original field improvements over there at Durfee High School. So we spent a lot of money. We made a turf field. You know, we look at Durfee High School as a Division One school with, it should be Division One across the board, athletics, arts, everything. And I, quite frankly, was very disheartened when I looked at us spending $263 million. And when I looked at a, at a meeting, I looked at a nice picture of all this beautiful color all over the field, and the baseball field was shaded. It just, I asked the architects at the meeting, what is the issue? Why is that shaded? Oh, that's not included. And it flawed me because I think the price tag was very high. And I said, well, what are we going to have? Not only did we not have a new baseball field, the school actually took the second baseball field. So currently, we went from one field that was kind of lousy, one field that we could never play on, to no fields. So, you know, it was unbelievable. And Mr. Pacheco's always been a supporter. The project, you know, the Durfee High Project, I wouldn't say it's over budget or anything, but basically, there's not going to be a lot of leftover money that we could guarantee at the end to say, we can do this. And I've been on this for about a year and asking, when are we going to do something about the baseball field? Because if you take COVID out of the picture, students that go to Durfee High School, Division One school, haven't been able to play a baseball game in years on that field. It's totally embarrassing. So, we need to do something, and I really wanted to be here today to make sure I can advocate to move this forward. Your concerns about the turf fields, I think people around, as Mr. Pacheco said, are building these fields all over the place, colleges and the like. So, I would tend to think that they've looked at some of those, you know, there's always, you can get articles on each side of any issue. I think as we go through this process, Mr. Pacheco, I think, can figure out whether those are accurate. I don't think he, myself, or any member of the school committee or administration would want to harm anybody with those fields. But I think with the technology, you know, I think it is a lot better. When we look at the overall picture of that field, raising the field up, it does cost a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, 1.8 million's a lot of money, but I recall 15 years ago, when we talk about whether something's cost-effective, when we were doing the other project. And 15 years ago, it cost us at least $35,000 for football season on the old football field, and we really couldn't play. But it would be like you'd have to spend for turf and you'd have to, it was around $35,000 a year. So when we were looking at it, we said $35,000 a year for like a 15-year lifespan, we ran a half a million dollars that we were paying for sod and for things that were just a waste of money 15 years ago. So I think it's cost-effective. I do hope that it gets, you know, the approval of the council to be put forth. I want to credit Mr. Pacheco for his due diligence on all of our facilities. So when he talks about renting, potentially renting a facility, there was years, years ago in the schools that we used to either not be able to rent because we had lousy facilities, and we never had any revenue coming in that we could help us absorb some of the other pieces. In this case, if we make varsity Division One fields at Durfee High School, we'll be able to sell that to other people and rent those fields out because you can play on it multiple times, AAU baseball, all those things. People pay other communities to use their facilities. We'd like to keep that in-house, and we have, we have a program that we recycle that money for the good of the, of the school system. So I really want to just advocate for the, for the project. I think it's worth moving forward at the very least, and I think Mr. Pacheco does a great job with trying to make sure it's maintained properly. I'm here to answer any questions as an individual, but I do appreciate your support of the schools in general, especially these projects.
Well, another fact that struck me when I was looking into this is the fact that we have 30 major league baseball teams in this country. Well, actually, one is out of the country, it's in Toronto. 25 of those 30 use natural turf. Only five use artificial turf, and they're indoor facilities. So, you know, I kind of, and this isn't to be a wise guy or anything. This, I'm just trying to be really just honest and really look at this picture. So, you know, immediately, it struck me, well, if 25 out of 30 major league fields take that direction, why wouldn't we?
Yeah, my only comment to that, and you do have, as a counselor, I appreciate every question that you ask, every piece of research you do, so I'm not saying anything about that. When I look at the major league baseball fields, though, if you told the Boston Red Sox that they needed to play double headers every day on their field, they would say, no way. And if we'd had to, they'd put artificial, would be my argument under usage. So that's, I think, the difference. And so, basically, it's pristine, you can't even walk on that field. But if they, if we used, if Fenway Park was used as much as we do, they would say, oh, we can't do this, we've got to do artificial, would be my rebuttal to that particular part. You field usage and just allowing kids to play on it, practice, you know, you practice for two hours, we're going to have to probably have freshman JV Voss, like, three sets of practices almost every day on the fields as it is because we got rid of one. So I think that we could strategically do it so we could get more activity for the kids both during school and just keep on, keep on using them.
Now, do you think any of the monies that you would receive in renting the field could help to offset the cost of the field?
I, if I could. The idea would be, we currently have a revolving account for our school rentals. And I would, I would, at the time, ask that that ceiling be raised in that account because I believe that if we're able to rent at what we think is going to be a very, very rentable field, along with a couple of other fields on off-seasons when we're not using it, we'll be able to replace carpets. As opposed to coming here looking for money or using other money, we will have that money generated to replace carpets on a regular basis. So, the life expectancy of it is between eight and 10 years, depending on the use and the maintenance, both of which go hand in hand. I believe that the revolving account, if we, if we maintain it for what it's, what it's meant to do, will replace those carpets. And I know that when the original two football fields were done, that wasn't the case, so there was no account set up, so to speak. But now it's there, and we're noticing already with some of our rentals that we've been able to do that. For instance, the Talbot Gymnasium, it's rentable now. It wasn't rentable before. We know that eventually, we're going to have to redo that floor again. The CUS, the Henry Lord, all of those items that we know are very rentable, we know that we're going to have to do those improvements, but the rent is paying for the improvement. So we're getting the use of the facility for all of our students, and we're also allowing, whether it be Flo River Companies, organizations, or outside, to use that field. The rates are all set by the school committee, and there are, all of our expenses are covered in there, whether it's security, whether it's custodial grounds, all of those are covered in those particular rentals. And it also allows, so that overtime piece is coming out of those accounts, which is something the school committee had done in the last few years. The, the remaining amount of money would be used for the upkeep of these fields.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Is there going to be stands at this baseball field?
Yes. The field is complete, it's dugouts, fans, fencing. The only thing that's not included in that particular number is the lighting.
Is the entire baseball field enclosed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Counselor in seat one, Counsel LeCadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just along the lines of what you just mentioned, I guess, you know, originally, we looked at the brand-new facility for Durfee coming on, and then we found out that the fields weren't included in that. So, you know, we have this tendency in Flo River where we don't often go up for these projects, but when we do, we tend to either value engineer and remove things and not get, not get the project that we want or deserve. So, I guess with that, I mean, we're looking at 1.8 million, 1.9 million dollars for the fields, which, you know, I support. But does it make sense not to do the entire project and include the lights? Because I mean, if we're looking to have lights, then I guess why are we not including that? Especially if we're going to be, like, if you're, if you're going to be digging up the entire field and, you know, might as well run the electric, get the, get the lights up and things of that nature. Is there a reason why we're not including it in this number?
So it will be included in the price as an alternate, the lighting itself. All of the, the underground work will be included.
Yeah.
So we'll be doing all of the preparation work. The lighting is not in the price. However, depending on how quickly we get this process moving and beat everyone else using all the money that they're going to be, that's raining down from the sky, I think if we get ourselves into the queue quick enough, then I think the pricing should be very well, very good. And I think that we may have enough money in that 1.8. And if not, I'll, again, I'll be asking the, the school committee to fund the lighting portion of it. It's a, baseball lighting is a little different than the football lighting, so the pricing is, has become very reasonable. It's all LED lighting now, so.
But I guess, I guess what, I guess my concern is, is that, and I get you're going to put it as an, as an alternate, but if the, I guess if the construction prices don't come in, or the bids don't come in as you anticipate, we are not going to be able to execute the alternate, right? So, what, I guess what are the cost estimates for the lighting? I mean, are we talking?
I don't have them. What, and again, I'm just going to back up just a touch. So the school committee authorized a feasibility of the overall complex so that we could see the configurations of all the fields, how we're going to attack this in phases. Some of it is by construction need, other of it is going to be financial need. But the construction need is, I can't, even if we had the money, I couldn't do all the fields now. I don't have the ability to do them because I don't have the fields in place yet. I do have new fields that are being built, which are going to affect some of the fields we have in place. I have roadwork and parking that are all going to affect what we have. So I do have to piecemeal this out. But I believe that the, the overall, the overarching piece with this particular field is going to be, some of it's going to be flushed out with this study that's being done right now, this plan audit, if you would. And that will determine a cost for lighting. We've told them that we want lighting everywhere so that we can utilize these fields as much as we can, and it isn't going to be in the overall picture of what we're looking at for new fields and existing fields with renovations.
So I guess, is it, is it something you can do for, to get a quick estimate?
Sure.
Turn around time by the next time we meet?
Yes.
And I know, I know you've been authorized by the school committee to go a certain amount, but I mean, if we're talking about 200 or $500,000 for lighting, you know, I think in the, in the long scheme of things, that's short money when you're, when you're looking at a 20-year payback period, right? In terms of principal and interest. I mean, again, if we're going to do this the right way, I'd rather just, as a counsel, make the appropriation to include again. Because, you know, I think what we get, what we really get jammed up is that when we go back to the, to the public and we start saying that we've got these projects and we said we're going to get a baseball field, and now we need to get lights for the baseball field, and that's, that's really where we kind of get, again, jammed up, as opposed to just coming out and saying, you know, we need a baseball field. I think everybody here supports the baseball fields. Now, what, what does that project really look like, and let's, let's get it done, you know? So, I guess, Mr. President, through you to the, to the clerk, if we make a motion, which is on the table, to publish and refer to finance, the publication, does that include the dollar amount?
Yes, it does.
It does. Can we, can the council, could, would it be, could the council amend that, the dollar amount for the publication? And then when, if Mr. Pacheco came back, make the amendment in Finance Committee to the full council to take a vote on something less?
Well, according to, I did print the ordinance.
Because we can't go higher once it's published, published, right?
Right. So it's been adjusted, it gets advertised again, so you can adjust if?
Oh, we can in two weeks, we can make the adjustment?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So is the school committee vote needed for that?
We do have a meeting coming up on the 15th, so I will ask that it be put on the agenda.
Very good.
For a change.
By then, did you already have quotes for those lights?
I don't have quotes for the lights, no.
But I'm sure you can tell those are on.
Yes.
Okay. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President?
One of my questions was already asked and answered. Counselor Peckham and I met with Mr. Pacheco and the athletic director a couple of weeks ago now at the baseball field to see its current condition, and we spoke about the drainage quite a bit. Was it two years ago you said there was no home games at all?
Last year, actually.
Last year? Do we play with COVID, though?
They played away. They played away. No, I'm sorry, it wasn't last year, so it was two years ago, yes.
Two years ago.
It was 19.
And we spoke a lot about the rentals, being able to take care of some of the maintenance for the fields. And then I just had one question, the test that you were speaking to Counselor in seat two about, is it the same test that you spoke about at the practice and regular football field?
Yes.
So it's the same test is done on the baseball field?
Exactly. Exactly, all on all on all artificial surface fields.
Okay. Well, that I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
The 1.8, is it, is there more fields that got to be done? I understand that you could be spending or looking for another 5 million.
So there are there are quite a few more fields at Durfee, two of which already have surfaces on them. But there are other fields that we are looking to put, but I am not ready. They're they're not in the queue right now. I just don't have the ability to to make those changes currently. And it's it's not financial, it's it's logistic with the with the new construction and the demolition of the old building. I'm not ready to make those field improvements right now.
And that would require another loan order?
They would require another loan order, yes, at some point.
You know, you you spend 263 million, you figure it's a lot of money and you think everything's all set. And we got to go back to the taxpayers saying, well, we need 1.8. And are you saying that you probably need another 5 million?
I'm not going to go out on a limb. I think Mr. Sahadi has in the plan, and again, on on some of these long-term plans, some of these are guestimates. So I I really, I'm not going to say to you that that's the hard number. But I, you know, the the construction piece on the Durfee High School is is continues to go round and round and round. That school was presented for 363 million dollars, not 263 million dollars. $100 million was cut out of that project right from the get-go. So if we're looking at why some of these things are not included, some of it's got to do with that. We're going to take off the things down in in the order and and not saying that those fields are not as important as everything else going on there. But they are, they were, we did have to find $100 million worth of savings. Some of that was inside the building with whether it be the extensive woodworking that's that's all over these buildings today. As you can see in cuss and and all of our new schools, some of it is that. Some of it is size of the building, you know, the square footage of the building. Some of it is is the extent at which we've renovated the the field house. The field house alone is an 18 to 20 million dollar renovation project. And when you put everything in perspective, from where we've been, we built the Fonsika School for 30 million dollars, 32 million dollars. We're talking about a renovation of a one particular part of Durfee at 20 million. So the the to keep everything in perspective, the 1.8 million dollar baseball field today was not necessarily that 1.8 million dollar baseball field when those renovations should have happened. But and it's not kicking the can down the road. It's putting our priorities in place and where we needed to be at the time. So am I going to tell you that I need five more million? I'm hoping five more million will cover it. But I'm 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 not prepared to come to you with that. And and I have no, I have no authority from the school committee to spend any of that money. All I'm saying is is that I I have a methodical way that I have to approach this for a lot of reasons. And money is not one of them right now.
Well, to come up and say 1.8 and really, you really need 6.8, I guess. So it's like saying, well, we'll try to grab this and we'll come back and see if we can get the rest done. You know, it puts us on the spot because, you know, a lot of people out there and the taxes increase the water and everything else say, hey, when's this going to stop? And we just spent some big monies hoping that the school would be built right and there's issues on that. And the fields should be done, but it's not. It's not done. So something went wrong somewhere and we got to go back to the taxpayers and say, well, what are we going to do here? How do you answer it, you know? Do you want to do it? And, you know, Mr. Aguirre comes up with, see, it's a good thing and all well and good. That's a pet project. It looks good. You probably have people coming down and play big games and all that stuff and you can make money. But again, we got to sit here and try to justify it and and that's it. I mean, I I thought it should have been included in the whole, what else is not included in that? Do you got more surprises?
Pay raise for Ken Pacheco is not included in that, I can tell you that right now.
What is it?
A pay raise for Ken Pacheco is not included in that, and I can tell you that. I I it's hard to say that because we've done in all construction projects we do, we call VE, so value engineering. You look at a project and you say, I'm going to remove item X because item Z is more important. So that stuff happens throughout the whole project. The initial $100 million was a big slice off of this. And the project was originally intended after that 100,000, 100 million dollar cut to cut yet down to 200 million. And there was no way to build a project that way. Durfee was, is a difficult site to work on because it wasn't, it wasn't virgin earth. So it was all dug up, rocks, everything else, water mains, because most of those streets continue through like Weidemel Street. Water mains from Weidemel Street go all the way through to 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 Elsbury Street. So all of that stuff is is part of this overall old picture. So as I said, the VE piece of this, I couldn't single out anything other than the field house, which could have used more money, you know, and I wouldn't have been, you know, or I I say I and I don't mean that. There's a bigger picture here. There's an awful lot of people, Chris Gallagher, who is doing a phenomenal job there. Chris and his team with trying to make everything fit in this in this tight, tight budget. And there's a lot of professionals that we've hired to make sure we stay on track and within budget. And we are within budget. So I I just can't put my, other than talking about the field house, it's really tough to put my finger on one particular thing or two that we cut out of this project that would make a difference. A lot of, a lot of the stuff, and I don't want to say just aesthetics, but there is a grand look of the new Durfee that is being done on an economy scale. The goal was always to to pay tribute to Rock Street, and we think we've we've accomplished that with the with the main building and the way it looks. However, there were probably more grand ideas as to how that would have looked. Maybe the outside material would have matched closer to Durfee. I don't know. All I know is the project that we had at 263 million is the one you see with a couple of changes, a couple of additions like that skin that's being put on the the outside of the field house.
All right. I mean, I'm not here to give you a hard time. I know you got a tough job to try to get it done. You're losing the rest of your hair, probably lose it all before it's all done. But to Kevin, you guys got money coming in like there's no tomorrow. You put 66 people on, you can't get some of that money for that field or you can't use that money?
I can only give you my opinion based on being one member of the committee. So I'll give you my own opinion personally, not as a not as a school committee body. But I can tell you my opinion of when you asked the question to Mr. Pacheco about what do we do with people or the taxes, everything's going up. And that's a valid concern. I will, I would say that if we as all elected officials have to point to, not next year, the year after, when they get the two and a half percent raise and they get the debt exclusion for the high school added to them. If I could give everybody in elected office an idea would be to just say, you need to be laser focused now of how we're going to handle that two years from now. And if you asked me my opinion, the combination of the S or funds, the funds that we're going to get both in the city and the schools, we need to advocate so that that money can be used so that we don't have to go to the voters for the debt exclusion. That's that's option, it's not, it's optional in the fact that if the city says that's how we're going to fund it, great. But my advice to you, to us, to everybody would be to say, that's a legitimate savings if we don't have to go to the debt exclusion for those voters. So when all that money comes in, before we start deciding, spend it here, spend it there, we should take that off the table as soon as we possibly can, if at all possible, with the money, because that's real savings that people are going to have, you know, in their in their taxes, because it's going to go up twice. And that's, that's a, two and a half plus the the debt exclusion is the piece that I think is, to me, is more than the two and a half percent increase. It's because you, you know, you build that in. So when you're looking at it, as more member, my opinion is to is to look at those things and say, how can we use funds, save funds, create accounts like in the school department, like I suggested at the meeting, when we get all this money, we need to create an account so that we can have our own rainy day type account. We don't have access to that in the schools right now. So we get to be like, let's try to spend it and what can we do? So we need to create, working with the legislature, to create some options for us to have those accounts where we can save and maybe help to pay some of the debt service while still providing good schools and 66 people. Those 66 people aren't spending all of our budget. Those are needed people for for the schools. So we need actually more than those folks, but I understand your point fully. If we're spending that, what are we doing for the taxpayer to save something in the end? And I would urge you and everybody else to look at, let's see if we can do away or push those debt exclusions out as long as we possibly can.
What will be the the price at the taxpayer for the school if they have to pay it? I don't remember.
Jogging my memory to when the those issues came up during the debate. But if I had to guess, I thought it was double the two and a half. So it would basically be like the equivalent of the two and a half was the debt exclusion, as I recall during the debates about whether we were going to pass the the school or not. So but I I think that's a valid question to ask at budget time to know what are we looking at two years from now? Because now you see what the numbers are going to look like. And then you say, okay, well, if we can, you talked about 5 million for these extra programs. If we can save 5 million from any kind of these S or funds or other stuff, we could either pay for the this program outright or we can just save for 5 million worth of debt exclusion, we're not going to go to. So instead of two years from now, it could be pushed back four years and still be made whole. But a valid question.
You know, a lot of people ask me what it's going to cost. Really, I don't have the answer. I thought it was like $63 every quarter, but must be wrong. But Mary, you're going to have to give me that answer so I can tell the people what it's going to be coming in '23. This way I won't mislead the people. I probably shock them if they get a bad, maybe in trouble. But I think we all should know what it is, that we can give a correct answer. So the fields, you know, you're going to decide what to do. I mean, if everybody else is getting that stuff and it makes it where people are going to come down because you got a field that is set up professionally and maybe they'll come down and play the big games. I don't know how it works. Then again, I don't know how much the city can get for the particular event that they have in, you know. I mean, that's another thing that you got to look at. So it's a lot to kick around and I guess that's what we're here for. You got to ask the questions and try to get the answers. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think what Counselor Pelletier was getting at, and if not, I'll I'll make my own comments about this. The prior mayor made a decision on the spot when he was called, when Mr., the vice chairman and the prior city administrator was in Boston advocating for this MSBA project. And at that point, the mayor was called and said, do you want to do the schools as part of the 263 million or the pool? The mayor decided to go with the pool instead of the fields. Now, it was at, now, I don't know what kind of cost analysis went done or anything like that. My opinion, and I'm just my opinion, I think the fields are used more than the pool has been used. But granted, the pool was at a capacity level where they couldn't have any meats, they couldn't do anything. So I guess that was what went into that decision. But there was an opportunity, I want to make it clear, that we could have included the fields in the 263 million dollars. But we decided that the mayor, not the council, the mayor decided to go with the pool instead, which costs $6 million. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Thank you. Committee, committee member, I you mentioned, you mentioned that there's a, not necessarily a possibility, but if if the 200 or I guess for our end, the 98 million wasn't fully used, would it be able to be used in something like this?
You're talking about in the construction project?
Yeah.
I can only tell you what I've been told, and Mr. Pacheco would be a better person to answer. But at the end of the 263 million, which we're coming to, if we were able to do everything in the project so that the school could open fully and there was any funds left over, I believe some of that could be used. But the problem is there's so many needs trying to fit everything in there. So I believe that like any other.
Well, that was going to be my next question was where would be, where would this be on the priority list if you did have funds left over?
That would have to be a decision at the time of the city because technically it's a city project. So like they never asked my opinion that as a school committee member or the whole school committee, whether we should have done the pool or the fields.
Right.
That never came before us.
Apparently it was.
I've asked those questions and there was no cost and benefit analysis of the pool, all that stuff. But I, as one school committee member, I just had to just accept what it was. So I would assume that that money could be used for a like project like all the other pieces.
And I mean, you, most people know, I mean, who watch these these council meetings, I I want everyone to have everything. But it's just, it's about affordability at the end of the day, you know? We already are, and you already mentioned all the costs that are going to be coming on the way. It doesn't, it just doesn't seem right for me to sit here and say, yeah, let's just keep on spending. It just, it doesn't sit right with me. I want, I want to support this, but, you know, and not and not even not even mentioning, you know, the the amount of information that Counselor Dion mentioned about the health concerns and about the environmental concerns. But just the cost in itself is just, it's just something it's it's hard to, it's it's hard to say yes to when you know you have so much hanging over the city already. With with the tax raise coming, you know that the water rates are going to be going up and down the line as well. It's just, it's just hard to say, yes, I support this and just go ahead and spend another $2 million. But just, just, I had a question because there was some talk about electric and about those costs, the $7,500 in here. Is that, is that just a one-time cost or is that something that's monthly or?
On the probability.
It says you you utility, water and electric, $7,500?
So the $7,500 in that particular piece would have been probably the scoreboard.
Okay.
Because it's a small dollar amount, so I'm guessing it was scoreboard.
Yeah, you have a scoreboard for 24,000.
Right. So I'm guessing the wiring to that scoreboard.
Okay.
You know, new conduit.
And what about water involved in that?
Water we have, but as an artificial surface, we wouldn't need water out there because the entire field would be an artificial surface. There would be no clay.
I think the only, I think for me, I would, I would support spending for the drainage portion of this. But I, I'm just not, I'm just, I'm just not sure I can support the entire cost. I just, I maybe I'll take a hit for that personally, but at the end of the day, it's just, it's too much. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Just quickly, I want to thank Counselor Hankier for staying close to two hours after saving the dress. And I don't want it to unrecognize. I think it's very admirable of you to give your input and your insight into the value of this project after the many, many years that you've been on the school committee, that you've coached youth in the city and that you've really been involved with with the city's youth. And I appreciate it very, very much, and I'm sure the city does as well. So thank you for the support. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Preckham.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming down. As Counsel Vice President Liberty stated, we had the opportunity to visit with you and.
Sorry about the sneakers.
Yeah, that'll come up. I'm going to put that in here. So I, we had the opportunity to meet with you in Athletic Direct in Boston. And I'm in full agreeance that the field's atrocious and needs to be, you can't play on that field. It's impossible. I stepped in the infield and I went ankle deep in the clay. The outfield is covered in water. I know we're going through the beginning, beginning of a thawing process and that's to be expected. But you go behind the fence and it's all wetlands leaking in. Question I have is, and I've tossed this back and forth since I was, since I met with you, was the feasibility, which would be more conducive to replace with the Kentucky Bluegrass Clay infield or to replace with an Asher turf field? Now, I played baseball my whole life. I I've played on both. Now, raising the elevation to two and a half feet, would that address the drainage in itself?
Yes, it would address the drainage. However, it doesn't put a new turf. It doesn't put a new, I'm going to call it turf and I'll call the other one artificial turf. So it doesn't put a new turf down. That that dollar amount is just raising the field. So you would have a gravel base, you would finish all of your drainage. Everything would be tied into the existing system that's been installed new and some existing. So that's what that money would buy. Now you need to put a field on top of that.
Okay. Now, the reason I, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, and the only reason I want to say, so you finish the artificial field, you stop playing on that. You seed or you turf field, you're talking about a full year and then some before you get to play on a grass field because you need, you need it to take, whether you're using turf, whether you're using. Whether you're using turf, whether you're using sod or whether you're seeding, you do have some time to wait. So, in the overall scheme of things, that's one more piece that the turf offers, as I said, over. And I have to say that I'm, I worry about the regular fields because I look around at the fields that we have in the city. And it's not for the lack of trying to take care of some of this stuff, but there's no control. So, unlike the high school and unlike Britland Park where we have a fenced area and we're able to control the usage, at the Britland Park, when it was a turf, when it was a regular turf field, as I said, you couldn't play on it after a rainy day. You weren't allowed to. So, we didn't let that field get ruined. And then on the weekends and some nights, especially in the summer, we would have multiple games going on Saturdays and things. But the field showed that kind of wear. And we used to spend a certain amount of money every year to the tune of about, not every year, but every other year, sometimes every two years, depending on the usage, to keep repairing it. So, I look at that and I say that the amount of, if we were just, if we were just using for high school purposes, then it's a whole nother look at this thing. But the idea would be, I'm still going to have to do some of that work. And it's difficult to keep people off of fields. Kids love to play on fields. They'll huck fences. They'll do whatever they need to do to get to where they're going to do. And we're going to find them out there playing. And I'm not saying they're destroying it. But going on to an artificial field and throwing a ball around and running and all of that stuff is one thing. Doing it on a regular turf field, there's going to be upkeep. So, the maintenance is more on a regular field, as we all know. But that would be my, my concern is always, and I keep saying playability, but it's the only way I can describe this, as Councilor Aguirre, as committee member Aguirre said, you have a JV, a varsity, a junior varsity. We have field hockey. All of those take place on those grass areas. We lost a JV baseball field. We lost a soccer field, the place where we played field hockey. So, those have to be replicated somewhere. And we don't have more space. So, we have to replicate them by using the same fields. So, the outfield or the baseball field could be used for field hockey. The soccer field, the current practice field, football field will hopefully become the new JV, the new varsity softball field with an artificial surface. So, multi-use on all of these fields. The new field that hasn't been built yet up on the hill in the plateaus, that field is, is going to be designed for soccer as a soccer stadium with lighting. That particular field, again, could be used for field hockey, could be used for lacrosse if that was something that the school ever decided to do. So, I think all of those multi-uses happen much easier on an artificial surface than they do on a regular field because of the multi-seasons and the ability to play on.
Yeah. And the reason I ask that is, I'm looking at this from both sides because it is, it is a lot of money. And the reason I had asked that question was, with the regular field, raising the elevation would cut back on some of the drainage issues. And same thing being with the turf. So, I'm trying to evaluate from both sides here. As Councilman C. One had stated, I would also like to see, if this is going to be done, it should be a one-shot deal. So, the taxpayer knows what they're paying for, and we don't have something come down the road to surprise us. And we're like, well, we should have added this. Because I know there was questions, and we had spoken about this, with the football field when it was originally put in, questions were asked later. I would rather button it all up front and make a decision based on an entire project instead of having bits and pieces come down the road. If I can, I'm going to touch upon the lighting. And we had spoken about this being a revenue generator, being able to have, I don't know, AAU, travel baseball leagues come down because they're always looking for fields to play on. And the better the field, the more money they're going to pay to play on these fields. These teams do charge, do pay a decent amount of money to play in these tournaments. And those tournaments do bring in some decent amount of money. Would you agree that the lighting itself would add to the attractiveness of the field to bring in these?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it would be, they'd have the ability to play night games where we could have a longer rental season, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There was one other thing I wanted to touch upon. Oh, while I'm on the topic, the football fields were brought up. Those are due to be replaced, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Who's, where's that coming from?
So, right now, the ultimate plan is, the football field is, the football stadium will stay just football stadium. But we will also be able to play field hockey on that field also. The other field right now, as part of the overall complex audit or feasibility study that we're doing, is to the configuration of the softball field, girls varsity football field that we're, sorry, softball field that we're trying to incorporate into that practice field, and what else can we fit on that field. So, that, that surface is in question, okay? Because we want to be sure that we match the surface with what's going to be played on it. And so, that, that's why when I say I'm not ready, it's because we're not that far into it. Once that feasibility study happens, then we have to, obviously, the school committee is going to weigh in on just what we have and where they want to go and how they want to move forward with, you know, where this is all going to happen. I don't know where those funds are coming from right now. I can tell you that I don't know how the construction project's going to end. I don't know what kind of funds are left over. To replace the football carpet is about $500,000. There's minor drainage work to do in it because, you know, it might just be an upkeep kind of thing. We do have done some preventive maintenance this year and two years ago. So, we've done some of the work that I think would probably have had to have been done if we ripped up the carpet. We've sewn seams. We've done some work. The carpet itself, the life expectancy is gone. It's useful life. However, what would go back on that field is nothing like what's on there now. There's so many advances in the particular industry. And the infill may not even match what's there. So, all of that stuff needs to be decided. And part of that is what's going to be played on the field. So, I can't, I can't tell you what, where that money's going to come from. I can't tell you the cost until this overall plan is completed. But that will be, that will give us a very definitive action plan moving forward.
Okay. I remember what I wanted to mention prior to that, too. And I appreciate that answer. The turf they use today is, to my understanding, a lot different than the turf that they used years ago. There is a bounce to it now. There never was. It was like playing on concrete. The advancement in the turf itself has come a long way, like you just stated, since that football field was put down.
Yes.
I have looked up some articles. One that I screenshotted, just a brief section of one, it says, "The new surfaces are designed specifically to reduce friction, lower impact forces, and increase water drainage." And it's far different than the actual turf of old. Is, do we have a specific company that you'll be using or are you waiting to see?
Yeah. So, we'll, once we know what we're going to do with those fields, then obviously, it's a project, it's a, it's a public project. So, there'll be an owner's project manager brought on. They will go through the process with us. They will work with putting together the designer of these fields. So, all of those costs are obviously built into all of these items. The baseball field has an owner's project manager. In Massachusetts, everything over $150,000 would need an owner's project manager. And basically, that's what we would provide there. So, there would be oversight through construction, but also guiding us into design and making sure that we're getting exactly what we, what we want for the particular play of the field.
Okay. I appreciate that. And just to clarify, this is, we're still on the topic of just taking this off the table, correct?
No. No, there's a motion that has been authorized to be.
Other than a motion, the initial.
Yep. So, the motion on the floor right now is the authorization to be published and referred to finance.
Yeah, okay. All right. With that, I yield. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything further on this? Councilman C. Two, Councilor Lee.
Yeah, I just had a couple more statements I wanted to make. Councilor in seat seven kind of brought it up. At our last meeting, when we did our last Zoom meeting, we had asked about the price moving forward for athletic fields. And we were told that $6.7 million was the price tag potentially for additional fields. If that number's accurate and you take away the 1.8 and add lighting, you're still over the $5 million threshold moving forward. Do we know how many fields need to be either replaced, repaired, or relocated?
Again, without this, this particular piece that we're doing right now, I would say four, five, I'm sorry, five, five fields.
Okay. And the only thing holding everything up, from what I understand, is logistical factors.
And I want to give you just one quick, for instance. The JV, the current varsity softball field, which will turn into a JV field, is also the place where we would do some of our track and field events because we can't do javelin and discus on the artificial surface. So, we need a grass surface. So, what we plan on doing with that particular field, if it works out, is we will do the infield in artificial turf. The outfield will remain regular grass, regular turf. And so, that's part of this. How is it going to fit into the overall design? And that's one of the questions that we have. So, things like that, or what I'm saying is, I can't make those decisions yet because I don't see how the field is going to lay out. They may not be in the same configuration they are now, other than the two stadiums, the football field stadium and the football practice field. Those are the only two that are stuck in stone. Baseball field also. The other field is kind of mobile. And then the, the new field up on the hill is also in design. We do have a finished product that's going to be delivered. However, that is turf right now. Not artificial turf, but it's turf. So, again, we need to take a look at that and see what those numbers would be because we, all the drainage would be, no matter what we do, all that stuff would be in place. It would be whether or not we want to upgrade that field to an artificial surface.
Because as you know, see, part of my hesitation also is the fact that, and I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again, as you know, this body can only approve up to $5 million.
Yes.
In a loan order. The fact that we're looking probably closer to $7 million in total bothers me. It bothers me that the people who pay the bill don't have a voice in it. And I feel they should because we are talking a significant amount of money. Granted, nobody wanted to be here or get here the way we did. We all assumed everything was going to be in the original price tag. Things, you know, things just don't always work out the way we want them to. And that's something that makes me hesitant because if, you know, if the next step is, yep, we're, you know, we're looking at five and a half million. Now, it has to go to the voters. I don't see them denying our athletes and our children. But I just find it hard to, that I feel like I'm circumventing. And I have a lot of difficulty with that. And that's just an honest, just my honest feeling about the whole thing. And then that leads me to, and then it leads me to wonder, what else is not in the price tag? Is there going to be another hidden thing that's going to come out of this and we're all going to sit here again and go, oh, my God? I don't know. So, with that, I yield. But thank you both very much.
Thank you. The motion on the floor that has been made to authorize it to be published and referred to finance has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
On the authorization and referral, Councilor Cadim?
Yes.
Deon?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Liberty LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. You as well. Motion carries. Next order of business.
Next order of business is the mayor's communication and appropriation orders appropriating the sum of $1,738,680 appropriated to the school appropriation. $1,282,529 is from the employer trust fund, and $456,151 is from state and county assessments.
Motion to, for the public.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion?
I.
Councilman C. Eight, Councilor.
I just have a question. Can we separate this? I just have a real problem with the employer's trust fund from the employer because we hear that all the time from the Insurance Advisory Commission. I mean, maybe take this from free cash in November, put it back. They're getting other money coming in. Can we separate this or does this have to remain together? Has to be together?
This is one, this is one order.
Okay. Not a problem. But I'm not going to be voting because of that. Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. The order has been made and adopted. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
On the motion to adopt, Councilor Cadim?
Object.
Any objection, any further objections? Hearing, hearing no further objections. Next order of business.
Next order of business is the communication from the mayor and loan order in the amount of $2,100,000 for improvements to several city buildings.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to authorize this to be published and referred to the committee on finance would be appropriate?
Motion, please.
Motion made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Lee. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number five is the mayor's communication and loan order in the amount of $390,000 for an excavator for the Department of Community Maintenance and a bucket truck with a lift for the police department.
Is there a motion to authorize it to be published? Motion to authorize the item to be published and refer to the committee on finance has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number six is the mayor's communication and loan order in the amount of $2,700,000 for constructing a building at fire headquarters to house Rescue Seven and their crew.
Motion.
Motion to refer the item to be published and refer to the committee on finance has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Council Vice President. Discussion? Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Council President, can you just make sure that the chief and the director are at the meeting of finance?
Madam Clerk, if you could just note that for the invites for the next meeting, the.
I apologize. On item four, could you also make sure that Mr. Gallagher is in attendance?
Of course. Yep.
Thank you.
By achieving EMS directive, correct?
Yep. And for item four, just for point of information. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Asia Andrea Greis to the Board of Library Trustees.
So moved. Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Councilor Lee, seconded by?
Second.
Councilor Pereira. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the request for the confirmation of the appointment of James Terrio Jr. to the Otuppa Water Board?
So moved.
Motion to adopt, the confirmation has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the appointment of Danielle Pixley to the Community Preservation Committee?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Deon, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the appointment of Thomas J. Ferris to the Traffic Commission?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Councilor Peckham, seconded by Councilor Deon. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the reappointment of Ronald Kaplan to the Board of Library Trustees?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Deon. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the reappointment of Attorney David Assad to the Board of Appeals?
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Councilor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the reappointment of Reverend James Hornsby to the Conservation Commission?
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the traffic ordinances?
Referring to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the submission of a request to install a plaque in memory of Roy Rogers. The city planner has submitted this request on behalf of Vernon Tripp. This should be referred back to the planning board.
Motion to refer. Motion to refer the items to planning has been made by Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas many residents of Wilson Road continue to have concerns regarding large commercial trucks using this road to access the industrial park area, and whereas these large commercial trucks should be accessing this area using Exit 10, formerly 8B, Innovation Way, Fall River, Freetown, from Route 24 and not traveling city streets, and whereas Way, Fall River Freetown, from Route 24 and not traveling city streets, and whereas area businesses were notified and requested to assist in resolving this issue by instructing their drivers and delivery companies to utilize the industrial park exit ramps via Route 24, and yet large commercial vehicles continue to travel on Wilson Road, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the Director of Traffic and Chief of Police to discuss this public safety concern.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion? The sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
The reason for the refile of this resolution, and Counsel Pereira had filed one earlier in, early in, I guess, the year, it was sent to Public Safety. I was told that the issue was resolved, and it was tabled, brought to Public Safety, and then we removed it from the table due to the fact that we were told the issue was no longer in existence. And then I got a few phone calls from, I guess, the woman that you had spoken to originally, stating that the issue had not been resolved. So I went down there, I went there twice, actually, and hung around, and there are commercial vehicles using Wilson Road. I know Representative Fiola has addressed this to where signs were discussed or placed on the highway, asking the commercial vehicles to use 8A instead of 8, or whatever the new numbers are now. I'm still, I have no idea still, but 8 and 8A, the commercial vehicles were asked to use 8A. I would like to see this go back to public safety and more diligence put into it. That way, we can speak to maybe Rep. Fiola and see if we can come up with a joint communication between us and the state on a way to resolve or come up with a remedy to the issue. Specifically, that intersection is an on-ramp and off-ramp 24, so that's why I would like to include the state delegation as well.
Sure. You're the chair of the committee, so you can certainly invite them.
Yes, so that would be my plan with you, to invite them to the Public Safety Committee meeting. So with that, I yield, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Yeah, I had put that in before, and we thought that the problem was resolved. I had spoken with Laura in Traffic, Chief Cardoza, as well as Carl Hexler, to let some of the businesses know. And some of the homes on the upper part of Wilson Road closer to Industrial Park, they have all stone walls. They used to be farmlands. They have pretty stone walls in front of their homes. And these trucks just jostling also, you know, destroying some of that. The only suggestion that I would make is to call all these people, Rep. Fiola said she's willing to work with DOT to see what they can do, but I'd also try to get some of the neighbors. And I wish that COVID wasn't around, because you could probably use the place up near there, maybe Gina's, you know, would let you use it. Maybe you can go to the Council President's House, it's close, and have a committee meeting there or something. But to get out into the community there, and I would invite them too. I just feel badly that it wasn't resolved, but some of these trucks, they just don't want to use Innovation Way, because it's a shortcut going that way. I don't know. The chief did put some device for speeding, and I don't think we caught anybody speeding, but they did cite a few trucks, so he would be good at doing that. But I think it's great that it's coming back and, you know, again, try to resolve it. I appreciate that. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. Motion has, sorry, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Sorry, I just, I just had a thought. Normally, I mean, can't you put, don't they put up signs for weight limits? Can't you put a weight limit on Wilson Road that they aren't legally able to drive up Wilson Road? Wouldn't that be kind of an easy fix?
We can invite Laura to that meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's actually, if I may, I had spoken to Mrs. Pereira a few weeks back regarding this topic, and that was something that I had brought up to her. It's definitely worth entertaining. It's something that we'll have her explain at the Public Safety meeting. It's definitely a very legitimate question, so.
Make sure you invite her.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. Motion has been made to adopt and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas prior to the 9C cuts of 2008, the then administration mandated that the Fall River Little League, Fall River Youth League, and local Babe Ruth baseball leagues take over the financial responsibility of paying for and maintaining the lights at the baseball field. And whereas our children, parents, coaches, and volunteers work tremendously hard to give our children the best experience possible during the baseball season, and whereas it has always been challenging for these baseball leagues to raise enough funds in order to maintain the lighting as well as their normal expenses, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene as soon as possible to discuss this matter, and the administration be prepared to present what the costs would be to the city in order to take this burden away from the local nonprofit baseball leagues starting this year.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion? One of the sponsors of the resolution, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
The reason for this resolution, and this is a resolution that you had filed a couple of years ago, and I believe it was just tabled, I'm not certain. I was on a radio show last week, and it was involving baseball, and I was reached out to by the president of Federal Little League, and we had spoken about this in some length earlier in my term about the usage of the lighting. And I found out that he just got a bill for $250 for med flights. There hasn't been Little League baseball federal since COVID started. There's some inconsistencies with the leagues and the funding to each leagues, because some of them are little leagues, some of them are independent baseball leagues, some of them have Babe Ruth fields. I just think it's an added burden to, especially in a city where we're struggling to get kids on the field to play when COVID isn't here. And a lot of these families, these kids, come from areas where they're not, I coached at Columbus, and we used to have to go out and buy baseball gloves for the kids. And what happens is when you add cost to the league, they have to sometimes increase the amount that it costs to play in the league itself. And sometimes that deters kids from playing or deters the parents from bringing their kids out. I would just like to see this maybe forwarded and addressed and see what we can do to help the leagues, because they are a nonprofit and B, I would like to start, do whatever I can to help the kids get back on the field at less cost to the league. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment as one of the co-sponsors too. Madam Clerk, if you can please send us over to the city administration tomorrow so that they can be prepared to have these discussions. It would probably be in our best interest to maybe invite Maplewood Park, Mr. Travis over there, a couple of the other members as well. This was a resolution I filed early, early on, and I know these leagues do struggle. Majority of their fundraising is geared towards just paying for the lights. Specifically, Maplewood Park is what I can, I can think of, because I spent a lot of time there as a kid. So if we can prepare that and send that over to the finance team so they can speak to the leagues that are in operation, there's less leagues now, too, than there were in 2008. So this might not be as much of an expense as we thought.
It is probably half the amount of leagues than there was then.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
I, I watched the park board meeting when they were talking about this, but I happened to be somewhere and I saw Joey De Silva, who's the chairman of the park board. We talked about getting kids back involved, getting them on the fields. And I told him I had seen the meeting where Kennedy Park was being charged for med flights. Now that, we're being told that they are not using med flights anymore because they're going to Providence now for trauma. I tried to call President Mike Bushel today, couldn't get a hold of him to ask him, because I wanted to know.
The point of information.
It's not so much about them lighting the field for a med flight to come in. The league was paying for it, but the hospital, to my understanding, had given a $600 donation. So if you get a $200 bill, well, then you really gave them a $400 donation. And I think it's split in here, so they need to talk about that. But I did call Nancy Smith and had a conversation with her. There's a lot more going on with lights and these fields, and before going to finance or anything like that, if anything, call the director of parks, call Nancy. There's only one Little League field. A lot of them have gone, I don't even know what they call them, federal or international, or that they can get kids from all over. We have leagues, people that play in the park, that come from all over to play here. And, I mean, that's okay. Maybe our children go to other places to play as well, but they come here because she, according to her, it's cheap to come here to Fall River. You go to other places and you have to pay a lot of money to rent fields. Also, there's some lights that are up, you know, light poles that are very old, and 66 of them, 66, need to be looked at or repaired. I even said, can you put solar panels on top of the lights to get lighting? You can't, because on a baseball field, the lighting has to venture out such a distance. And just before this goes anywhere, I think talking to Mrs. Smith and finding out what the amounts of money that these leagues are paying, some people pay $650 to play in a league. Each person has to pay that money. Some do fundraising. It really has changed a lot, and there's not as many leagues now, you're right, as we had before. And I don't know what the variables of that, you know, the rationale of that is, on why there's not so many leagues, but I really think you should speak to her first before bringing it down in finance. There's a lot more than just paying for a lighting cost. Most of those are nonprofit, and they get a different rate, they get a cheaper rate than what she would have gotten, the city would get. But I really think you should talk to her first, because she gave loads of information on all this, and then see what you can do. She's got fields that need to repair. She's got lights that, 66 lights that need to be taken down. And if you want to do something about this, then let's look at the budget this year and give the park department an increase. They haven't gotten an increase in a long time. So how can she spread this all out? You know what I mean? I would just talk to her first. You want to have finance do finance, but I just think she had a lot of information on different rationale for certain things. So I don't know. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President?
Yeah, I just have a question. You alluded to it. You put this resolution in prior?
I did.
What happened to it?
I just, it's been tabled in, in finance, I believe. I just haven't brought it forward because I didn't think there was really much of a financial appetite, based on my conversations with the administration.
So we're sending this back to finance where the other one is?
We are, but it's in the dead file. This was, this was one of, just so you know, this was one of my, like, first resolutions.
I remember.
Point of information, but I don't, we get, we get a list of things in the, in committees. I didn't, I didn't realize it was a dead file.
There is a dead file.
Listen, it's only, it's only because nobody wants to act on anything. That's just
It's not dead anymore, it's getting referred back.
So I would just recommend that you invite Mrs. Smith to the finance committee meeting.
I'm sorry, what?
I would just recommend that you invite Mrs. Smith to the finance committee meeting.
Right.
And Counselor in seat eight is correct. She does have a lot of expenses. However, she has sat in front of us year after year and never asked for any more funds, year after year after year. It's like, it's a tiny amount that she requests per park, and I know that she's proud of that, but we need to invest in our, in our parks. It's crazy that that happens. I'm not really proud of it, because I want our parks to look nice. So I would just request that she come, you invite her to this meeting.
Absolutely. Consider it done.
I yield.
Counselor in seat one.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just along the lines, and I appreciate the light aspect, but I would agree with a couple of the councils that mentioned that we haven't been doing anything to our fields, right? So I've been talking about this year after year after year after year, that if you take the entire park budget and divide it by the number of parks that we have, I think they get a budget of $2,000, right? So I'm embarrassed to say, when I drive by these parks and we look at the conditions and the shapes, I mean, just drive down North Park. Now, granted, we just did a nice portion down below, but you get to the baseball fields, it looks decrepit. You get up top, it looks decrepit. We're starting to put some sidewalks in there. Has anybody driven by Dumont Field? Like, just the highway? Dumont Field looks like it is deserted. Now, you've got folks who are trying to now do a baseball clinic over there, take over the fields again. They've been going to the park board. They're looking to try to get some improvements for those fields, and they're told that they need to get a roster, they need to find, you know, funding for this. I mean, it's absolutely asinine that we are telling leagues that are using city parks that they have to, number one, pay to maintain these fields, okay? I'm an administrator, I've got parks. I never, in my wildest dream, would tell somebody that wants to come and use a park, you need to pay for it. We pay taxes. That's what, you know, this whole thing about services is about, you know? We provide services. We have all these parks. I mean, you start to look at all these old pictures. You look at Kennedy Park, it used to be, and they're on Facebook, it's amazing, right? It used to be a farm, but there was an investment that was put in for these parks, and we just continue to ignore it. So at some point, I think we all need to understand, and I think collectively we agree, that, you know, these, these baseball fields, these parks, these basketball courts are for the youth. If we're not going to invest in the youth, then what are we doing, right? We look at, you know, look at the Highland Park, I mean, just during COVID with the basketball, right? I mean, that place was unbelievably busy. People are going out there. Now, granted, we had to push back because it was COVID, there was some concerns, but the fact that people are able to get out and utilize these things for mental health, exercise, whatever the case may be, is phenomenal. But again, what we do is we, we spend a little money in this park, that, that looks good. We do a little bit here, but we completely ignore all the other parks, right? I think it comes back to, again, the capital items that we've listed. It's, we get a couple of improvements, but we're not getting what we really want to see. So let's talk about what it is from a parks and recreational standpoint, what we want to see in this community, and what the fields look like, whether it's baseball, soccer fields, lacrosse, you know, I mean, I mean, there, communities are doing ultimate frisbee. We're behind the times. You're trying to, to try to create a situation where Fall River becomes a place where people want to live, work, and play. Okay, we're, we're starting on the, the living aspect with the South Coast Rail coming down, the housing market. I was, Sunday I went to PVD Donuts, 8:00 in the morning, standing in line. My kids wanted some donuts, and I'm hearing some college students who just graduated saying that they're looking for housing. And then all of a sudden, uninterrupted, they said, well, you know, some good places, upcoming places for housing is Fall River New Bedford, right? And the first words out of their mouth were, I don't want to go live there. Then we got to start asking ourselves, why is it? Is it arts, culture? Is it recreation? What are we doing? It's nice that we're going to have, you know, the South Coast Rail come down, but if we're not going to invest in our own infrastructure, then we're not going to get people who want to come down here and work. When you've got all these beautiful assets and we continue to ignore them, and we're not as, as councilors supporting that, then I, that's an issue. And I think we all recognize it, but we need to start, start doing something about it and taking action as opposed to just constantly telling a department head, can you please advocate? I don't know how many more times we need to tell a department to start advocating for their, for their department, so that we can support them. We can't increase the budget, right? We can only, we can only decrease it. So when it comes before us, we can say that we want to see something, but if there's no appetite from the administration, we're not going to see any of it. So yes, I agree with, you know, Counselor Peckham, who wants to see the lights reduced, because I don't think, you know, these leagues should be paying for them. If they are, then let's, if we're going to charge them and they're going to have it, then let's do it across the board. But there's inconsistencies, we're not maintaining them, or we drop some dirt down and they have to go and, and actually put the dirt on, spread it. They've got to pay for the water bill to get some irrigation out on the fields, and it's, it's a disaster. I don't know why we've gotten to this, this type of mindset that that's how we're going to conduct our business, but I think from my standpoint, I think it needs to change. I think we need to stop promoting people and supporting people who want to do something for our youth, right? We just talked about Durfee Field. The reality of the situation is that the average person is not going to be able to use the Durfee baseball field, but they could potentially use Maplewood, Pulaski Park, Chu Park, you know, Reddles Park, you go, you go down, North Park, all those parks that are really not getting, you know, the resources that they need. Those parks are in neighborhoods, and if we can't invest in our neighborhoods, then what do we, what do we, what message are we sending to people? So that's just my take. I know it was a long rant. I'll go back to being quiet with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I just suddenly thought, we've been having discussions lately about renting and selling the rights to name different places and locations, and we said we should think about potential properties. Maybe we should rent the right to name fields and let businesses invest in our fields. You know, we could, I don't know, I don't want to, I don't want to throw a name out there of a business who might want to support a field, invest the money into a particular field, and then it would be such and such park or such and such baseball field. Maybe we could even go down that avenue and, and let some of the big businesses and the people who profit in this community contribute to that. That I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat six. Thank you, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Yeah, Counsel Kadeem has actually touched upon the majority of what I was going to say. I actually, for a very short time, sat on the park, the board for North Park. And unfortunately, like Counsel Kadeem stated, those fields, just like the Durfee Field, are absolutely atrocious. The reason being, there is no baseball there anymore. Unfortunately, they were kind of driven into the ground, and I, and not by the city, just monetarily, they just couldn't afford to stay afloat anymore. And there's no more Little League there, and I believe Counsel Kilby might be able to answer. I think that's one of the oldest, that was one of the oldest Little Leagues in Fall River, was North Park.
Sneaker McDonald.
Yeah, Sneaker.
Yeah.
So it's sad to see these leagues disappear, especially one like North Park. But however we can help them to stay afloat and keep our kids playing and active, and give them parks to go and enjoy, and I don't know, like Counsel Dionne said, to rent out, there's other avenues we can explore. So I won't drag this on any further, I yield, thank you.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 13 is in order scheduling a public hearing for the acceptance of Linwood Street.
Motion to schedule hearing.
Motion to adopt, the order and schedule a hearing has been made by Counsel Kilby. Seconded by Counselor Lee, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the police chiefs report on licenses.
Motion to adopt and place on file.
Motion to adopt, police chiefs report has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Dionne, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have an application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license at 26 Byrne Street.
So moved.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses at 26 Byrne Street and 1591 Bay Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Dionne.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
To refer the items of corporation counsel has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Dionne, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of city council meeting.
Motion to adopt and place on file.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham. Seconded by Counselor Pelletier to adopt the regular city council meeting on January 19th, 2021, has been made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have minutes of the finance committee meeting of that same evening, January 19th.
Motion to adopt and place on file.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And we have minutes of the, the public hearing that was held on February 23rd.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, the public hearing meeting has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Kadeem, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Regulations, at a meeting held on March 8th, voted two yeas to recommend the accompanying order be adopted with Counselor Chris Peckham absent and not voting. This was the auto repair shop renewal license at 643 Breton Avenue.
Motion to adopt would be appropriate. Motion, motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dionne, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on March 9th, voted unanimously to refer the city's portion of the capital improvement plan to the full council for action.
Motion to approve the city's portion of the plan.
Motion to approve.
Has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all we have.
Is that all?
Yes, that's all we have, Mr. President.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Clerk Colling can attest that I use, I have utilized a dead file a number of times, so it does exist.
It does.
It does not exist.
By the way, just for the purposes of, we really couldn't get a lot of the leagues as well